Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment, Increment Finance Authority Regular Meeting of April 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Mayor Heikla?
I am here. Would you all please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a resolution commending and extending appreciation to the students of Norman North High School and Norman High School for their extraordinary philanthropic efforts and community service activities in the 2024-2025 school year. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, commending and extending appreciation to the students of Norman North High School and Norman High School for their extraordinary philanthropic efforts and community service activities in the 2024-25 school year. Whereas the students of Norman North High School have demonstrated outstanding leadership, generosity, and commitment to philanthropy through their annual student-led Spud Week, students performing unselfish deeds, and whereas during the 2024-25 school year, the students raised an unprecedented total of 212,000... No, it's not. It is, yeah, 212,053.06. Whereas the students of Norman High have also demonstrated outstanding leadership and generosity and commitment to philanthropy through their annual student-led Tiger Palooza Week, whereas the mission statement for Norman High School was, "Recognize the Need, Serve Others, and Change Lives." And the students raised 113,562.84, which is a record for Norman High School. And whereas both schools raise these funds for local charitable causes only, continuing a proud tradition of service and engagement within the Norman community. And whereas the efforts of these students have profound and lasting effect on numerous local organizations, families, and individuals in need, reflecting the spirit of giving that strengthens the fabric of our community. Now be it therefore resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the City of Norman formally honors and expresses its sincere appreciation to the students of Norman North and Norman High School for their extraordinary philanthropic efforts and recognizes the hard work, dedication, and generosity of these young leaders, and commends their commitment to service as an inspiration for future generations. Excuse me. I'd like to recognize Logan Curtis and Chad Bose from Norman North and Madison McDaniel from Norman High to accept the resolutions. There you go. Big picture.
Guys, guys, try, guys.
Crunch, crunch in.
I was gonna try to get you all stretched in over here, but he's doing it over there, so.
Well, they like Arbor Day too.
We gave you the wrong number. I had two for each school. Yes, they are. There's two and two. Oh, my goodness. Kind of forget these days.
Check, check, all right. Yeah, we just want to thank you guys so much. Want to thank the City of Norman and Councilmember Dixon, and then even Mayor-elect Holman for going to our assembly. It was just really exciting to just get to make a difference in the community. You said our slogan, it's "Recognize the Need, Serve Others, and Change Lives." And so that's what we're all about, and thanks to you guys, we're gonna get to continue doing that. And, yeah, one way we got to do this year was partnering with Norman North, and we had a joint recipient, which was the Salvation Army of Cleveland County. And so we got to raise money, and then that'll help go towards expanding their homeless shelter and just finding that issue in the city, so, yeah.
Good job.
Thank you for having us here today. So I'm one of the Spud chairs this year, and we're just, we were, this year we celebrated 25 years, and we were glad we were able to show the community how much Spud has grown over those 25 years. And we were just able to serve our community in so many different ways, and we were just so glad that we were able to celebrate it with everyone.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great work, absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
Okay, item two. A proclamation proclaiming Friday, April 25th, 2025, is Arbor Day in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge the pro- Oh, sorry.
Cast your vote again.
One more time.
Now is it happy?
It is?
It is.
Now, all votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge, receive, the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Friday, April 25th, 2025, is Arbor Day in the City of Norman. Whereas Oklahoma has recognized Arbor Day through observance and ceremonies for more than 100 years. We, whereas we recognize the importance of planting trees to beautify our parks and public spaces around our homes and businesses. Excuse me. And whereas we recognize the environmental, social, and economic benefits of trees, such as providing shade, creating a sense of community, and visually pleasing neighborhoods, reducing home heating and cooling costs, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and soil erosion, and enhancing property value and economic vitality of business areas. And whereas it is the purpose of Arbor Day to encourage the planting of trees in urban and rural areas, promote proper management of trees, and to remember the many benefits we receive from trees. And whereas Norman has been awarded for the first, for the 21st consecutive year, Tree City USA status by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas the City Utilities Department, Division of Environmental Resilience and Sustainability, City of Norman Parks and Recreation, and Norman Board of Park Commissioners have scheduled an Arbor Day observance on Sunday, April 27th, 2025, at 3:00 in the afternoon, at, as the Earth Day Festival in Reeves Park with a tree planting presentation. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, is Arbor Day in the City of Norman, and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day by planting an Oklahoma-proven tree for the benefit of all citizens and that of future generations. I'd like to recognize Michelle Chow, Stormwater. Is she here?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, there she is. Okay. Item three. A proclamation proclaiming Thursday, May 1st, 2025, is Leadership Oklahoma Day in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge, receive the proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution, acknowledge the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge, receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A pro- let's start it out again. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Thursday, May 1st, 2025, is Leadership Oklahoma Day in the City of Norman. Oklahoma exists to educate leaders across the state of Oklahoma on critical issues facing its communities, with their mission being to create, inspire, and support its member leaders whose commitment to service and excellence energizes them to positively shape our future. And whereas Leadership Oklahoma Signature Initiative is an annual 10-month program that takes class members deep into the state's inner workings in everywhere across the state, from the great plains and plateaus of the Panhandle to the hardwood forests and pine-covered mountains of southeastern Oklahoma. And whereas participants become familiar with the social and environmental complexities that afflict Oklahoma, including sovereignty, tourism, criminal justice, state government, education, economic development, military issues, agriculture, and energy. And whereas discussions with state leaders deepen participants' understanding of the opportunities, needs, issues, and resources inherently available in the wide range of Oklahoma industries. In this, this in turn stimulates collective problem solving for the greater good of the Sooner State, and whereas a dynamic network of Oklahomans is powerful enough to make a difference and provide hope for the future by working together and making our state a better place to live and work. Leadership Oklahoma has nearly 40 years of cultivating Oklahomans to become leaders in their communities and across the state. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby wish to commend the Leadership Oklahoma Program for their years of continued service to improving your state and proclaim Thursday, May 1st, 2025, is Leadership Oklahoma Day in the City of Norman, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge the dedication and commitment of those who serve this impactful program. Is Jody Lewis available to receive this? Is anybody else here from Leadership Oklahoma?
Matt Peacock.
Matt Peacock. Councilmember Peacock, if you'd join me.
Everyone should apply for Leadership Oklahoma.
Item number four. A proclamation proclaiming Saturday, just a second. Excuse me. A proclamation proclaiming Saturday, April 26th, 2025, is Norman Musical, Music Festival Day in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge, receive of the motion?
Motion.
A motion second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge, receive of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge, receive of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll get a drink of water, and then I'll read this one. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, April 26th, 2025, is Norman Music Festival Day in the- Whereas the City of Norman has a strong sense of community, a high quality of life and affordability, and appreciation for diversity, the arts, culture, and whereas arts and culture flourish alongside academia and sports within the City of Norman. And whereas Norman is currently involved in a downtown revitalization project, excuse me, that includes many diverse downtown events throughout the year for residents and visitors. And whereas the City of Norman is known as a city of festivals by the state of Oklahoma. And whereas the City of Norman was the first city in the state of Oklahoma to offer a free independent music festival for all ages to enjoy. And whereas the annual Norman Music Festival will be held downtown from Thursday, April 24th through Saturday, April 26th. And now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 26th, 2025, is Norman Music Festival Day in the City of Norman, and urge all citizens of Norman to consider attending this festival with friends and family, and help grow the tourism and economy in the City of Norman, Oklahoma. Is Sherri Ransley Jackson here to accept this? I thought I saw her. I don't. I'll save it for her, and we'll give it to her later, but. She can pick it up at the office. All right. If she comes in, we'll figure it out. Next item is item five. Just persistent. Item five. A proclamation proclaiming Thursday, May 15th, 2025, is Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week and the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025, is National Police Week in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to accept the proclamation.
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to accept the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge, receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Thursday, May 15th, 2025, is Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025, is National Police Week in the City of Norman. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, is National Police Week. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and the members of our law, that law, excuse me, that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas members of the Fraternal Order Police Auxiliary invite residents of Norman to participate in Project Blue Light by placing a blue light in front of their homes or places of businesses during National Police Week in remembrance of those law officers who gave their lives in the line of duty, and for the officers who continue to keep our neighborhoods and communities safe. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 15th, 2025, as Police Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of fallen heroes. I, we do hereby invite all citizens to attend the Norman Law Enforcement Memorial Service on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, at 10:00 in the morning at Legacy Park Amphitheater located at 1898 Legacy Park Drive. I'd like to recognize Sergeant Duty of the Norman Police Department to take this award.
Good evening. Last year I had the privilege of accepting the proclamation for Police Week, and I am honored to represent your police department again this year. In 2024, we lost 148 officers across the United States in the line of duty. These officers were on average just 42 years old with 14 years of service in law enforcement. Their sacrifice is a solemn reminder of the risks taken every day, and their families- Their sacrifice is a solemn reminder of the risks taken every day, and their families, agencies, and communities will carry the weight of that sacrifice forever. While we never forget our fallen, we will honor them on Thursday, May fifteenth, at ten a.m. On that day, members of the Norman and more police departments, as well as the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, will hold a memorial service at Legacy Park. We cordially invite all of you to join us in remembrance of those who gave their lives in service of their community. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Ward one.
Well, if you drove downtown, they're getting the Ferris wheels and everything set up, and my kids are excited about that, so have a great weekend, enjoy Music Fest, and stay safe.
Councilmember?
No announcements for Ward two, thank you.
Councilmember?
Well, good evening, Ward three, in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope everyone is doing well this evening. I just have one announcement that is citywide, so mark your calendar for May third, which is the Electronic Waste Event held at Reeves Park between nine a.m. and twelve p.m., and you can drop off anything from TVs to VCRs, cellphones, anything that has a cord. So for all of you here with us and watching online, thank you for being here.
Councilmember?
Yes, good evening, Ward four, in the City of Norman. I've gotten some questions today about big trash pickup. Please know there have been delays and the city will be working their way to your curb if they haven't already. Thank you to Ward four resident Tori Teder-Loughlin for serving on Parks Board. I will be attending with a VIP pass and working two shifts at Opelousas this year for Norman Music Fest. You can grab your VIP pass, download the app, review the lineup, and review the festival rules at normanmusicfestival.com. And if you're somebody who needs medical care or needs to speak to somebody who's a police officer, there'll be strategically placed infographics that will let you know if you're suffering abuse or harassment, where you can go, or if you need medical treatment. April is Alcohol Awareness Month. This is an opportunity to update your knowledge about alcohol use disorder, A U D, and the adverse impact of alcohol misuse on health and society. Alcohol-related problems continue to take a heavy toll on an individual's health and society. Alcohol-related problems continue, oh, I'm sorry. Researchers estimate that each year there are more than one hundred and seventy-eight thousand alcohol-related deaths, making alcohol a leading preventable cause of death in the United States. In addition to more than two hundred disease and injury-related conditions are associated with alcohol misuse, I mention this because I'm part of a fourteen-person group text that spent the last four days helping somebody into treatment. This group text includes downtown business owners, social workers, artists, and musicians. It wasn't easy because of how bad this person had gotten, and I have spoken on this subject before, but I remain firmly committed to pursuing a sobering center for Norman. It is just one piece in a giant puzzle for mental health and substance abuse. My heartfelt sympathies to those who struggle with alcoholism and to those in their support system, and I hope those who have no one as a support system seek treatment before it is too late, and you do not have to struggle with this disease on your own. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Councilmember?
I wanted to say congratulations again to the students of Norman High and Norman North for Spud Week. Dating myself a little bit, but I got to participate in the very first Spud Week twenty-five years ago as a student of Norman North, so I'm really glad to see that that's still going. And I can only imagine from the time that I was there how many lives that they've touched. And I heard that the students of Norman North, Scott told me, from freshman year to senior year raised almost a million dollars as students, so that's pretty amazing. Also wanted to mention the Leadership Oklahoma Day. Leadership Oklahoma is a really great program. I'm proud to be an alumni of that. I recommend anybody who finds civics or cities or regions to see what they're going through. If that's something that interests you, definitely apply for that program. And Matt Peacock is an alumni as well as I. Either one of us would be happy to write you a letter of recommendation that's part of the application process, so very, very good program. And then, of course, Norman Music Fest is this weekend. Bring your umbrella if it rains, it'll be okay. I know that all the local businesses are looking toward, looking forward to such an influx of people into our city, and for free music and art, it doesn't get much better than that, so hope to see everybody down there and be safe and have fun.
Councilmember?
I would echo that same thing about the Norman Music Festival and just how amazing of an event it is for not only Norman but for the state of Oklahoma, and the fact that people travel to Norman during this weekend from many different states and even some other countries just to visit Norman during this weekend. And for many of us that grew up here in Norman in the eighties, nineties, early two thousands, downtown Norman was not a place where there was a lot of, much of, anything going on, really, and it wasn't a very nice place to be. The sidewalks were all busted up, the lights, half of them didn't work. There were not very many businesses outside of offices and things down there when I was, even in high school, Josh and I were in high school. And now there's so many wonderful things happening, and the Norman Music Festival is just, is one of those events that I could have only dreamed about as a kid, where Main Street is closed off to traffic for two days, and there's thousands of people walking in between all the buildings and going into all the stores and restaurants and venues and stuff. And so it's a free event, as was mentioned in the proclamation. It's one of the only free music festivals that exists probably in the whole country, so I would encourage everybody, regardless of the weather, it's not supposed to be severe weather or tornadoes like last year, so even if it rains a little bit, it's still worth getting out and enjoying and supporting all the people that help put it on every year. I will be helping host the main stage this year, so please come by and say hello, and I might end up reading that proclamation if Mayor Heickla doesn't make it out to the festival Saturday night, so. And then also wanted to mention that on Sunday, if you haven't had enough partying all weekend for Norman Music Festival, we have Earth Day Festival on Sunday from noon to five at Reeves Park in Ward seven. That's a real fun event that we've been putting on for many years, and lots of great vendors, live music, great food, and lots of real helpful information about how we can be better stewards of our environment here in Norman. I think there's tree giveaways and all sorts of stuff, so that's another free event that's open to the public at Reeves Park on Sunday. And then also wanted to, since I wasn't here last week, it was only my second council meeting that I've ever missed in the last twelve years, and I was feeling so ill I couldn't stand up last Tuesday, could not be here unfortunately. But two weeks ago, we were in Washington, D.C., me and three of my colleagues up here, and we got to meet with all, well, we got to meet with our seven representatives in Washington, D.C. from Oklahoma. I think four of them in person and three of them had representatives there to meet with us, but we were able to talk about really important issues with them regarding housing issues in Norman, infrastructure issues like transportation, projects that we're trying to get done, projects that we're trying to think about to plan for in the future for Norman. We talked a lot about the airport and the need for improvements to the terminal and the facilities there. And then also, we talked in great length about the National Weather Center and how important it is to not just Norman and our local community and our local economy, but also to the entire United States, really to the entire planet uses the data that comes from the National Weather Center. Every flight in the air right now, the weather data that they're using is coming from Norman and the National Weather Center, and so it's extremely important. And, you know, one of the things I wanted to remind folks about when it comes to federal employees is when those federal employees are paid to do a job and they live in Norman, they buy houses in Norman, they shop at our businesses, they eat at our restaurants and go to the bars, and their kids go to school here. Anything they make is going right back into our local economy and going right back into everything. And Congressman Cole, he pointed out to us that Congressional District Four, which we're in, out of four hundred and thirty-five congressional districts, our district has the sixteenth-most federal employees in the whole United States. And so he definitely understood how important it is to Oklahoma's economy and to our local economy here in Norman and more and throughout this congressional area with multiple, you know, Tinker Air Force Base and Fort Sill in Lawton and the Weather Center here in Norman and many others. So they were very receptive, I appreciated their time that they spent with us, and I think it was very productive, and hopefully we'll see positive things for Norman out of that in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements for Ward eight.
All right. Announcement I have is on May third downtown by the courthouse, we're going to have a cultural unity parade. That is a group that's run by Racism Stinks, if you know Baxter, if he's not here yet, he will be. He's, we're engaged in that in Norman Police, and if you'll join us on May third at eleven o'clock in the morning down by the courthouse. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items six through item twenty-eight be placed on the Consent Docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items six through twenty-eight.
Motion.
Second.
Had a motion, second. The motion on the floor is to place items six through twenty-eight on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been acknowledged, and to place items six through twenty-eight on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any of the items? The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may.
All votes have been acknowledged, and to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent items. Item twenty-nine, conducting and closing the first public hearing for the F Y E twenty-twenty-six City of Norman and capital budgets. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. The motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to open the public hearing passes unanimously. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, ma'am. Make your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I just have a brief presentation before the public hearing starts. It's my privilege to present to the council and to the citizens of Norman the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2026. With this, we opened the first of two formal public budget hearings. Today's session marks the fourth public meeting in this budget process, a process that reflects months of dedicated work and thoughtful collaboration among city management and staff. Following this hearing, we will continue our discussions with a study session on the capital fund on May sixth, a study session on the enterprise funds on May twentieth, and a final public budget hearing on May twenty-seventh before council considers the budget for adoption on June tenth. The proposed budget documents are available on our website. I'd like to begin by emphasizing that this proposed budget serves as far more than just a financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year. It is, in essence, a comprehensive policy document, one that reflects the values, priorities, and strategic vision of our city. It also functions as an operational guide that holds departments accountable and as a vital communications tool that transparently illustrates how public resources are allocated in the support of the city, the community's goals. Our commitment to excellence in these areas has been recognized each year since nineteen ninety-one by the Government Finance Officers Association, underscoring the quality and integrity of our budgeting process. We'll start with projected total revenues for F Y E twenty-twenty-six across all funds, which are projected to reach three hundred and six point nine million. General sales tax comprises the largest share at thirty percent, followed by fees and charges at twenty-three percent and other revenues at nineteen percent. This represents a three percent increase over the current year's budgeted revenues, driven primarily by projected growth in fees and charges as well as incremental gains in the other tax category. Looking at projected total expenditures across all funds for F Y E twenty-twenty-six, we're projecting just over two hundred and ninety-five point two million. Public safety accounts for the largest portion of this total at twenty-four percent, followed by strategic support and criminal justice at fifteen percent and water utility-related expenditures at thirteen percent. This represents a one percent decrease from the current fiscal year, largely attributable to a reduction in capital projects in the Water Reclamation Fund, the Sanitation Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. Turning now to the city's largest fund, the general fund, projected revenues for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2026, are estimated at one hundred and seven point one million. Sales and use taxes represent the most significant revenue source, comprising sixty-five percent of the total, followed by internal charges at eight percent and franchise taxes at seven percent. This is the point in the presentation where we like to remind our citizens that as a municipality in the state of Oklahoma, our reliance on sales tax to fund core operations is unique. Oklahoma remains the only state in the nation that does not fund, permit the use of property tax to fund operations. Altogether, this reflects a one percent decrease from the current fiscal year's budget, primarily due to reduction in cost allocation revenue from the city's utility funds. Final slide. Projected general fund expenditures for F Y E twenty-twenty-six are estimated at one hundred and eleven point two million. The largest portion of these funds is directed to the police department at twenty-eight percent, followed by the fire department and the public works department, each allocated twenty percent. This represents a two percent increase over the budgeted expenditures for the current fiscal year, primarily driven by a slight rise in personnel costs. Notably, personnel costs account for approximately seventy percent of the city's total operating expenditures. At this time, we'd like to invite the public to share their thoughts and feedback on the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2026.
Okay. As Ms. Kaufman said, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Excuse me. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, are there anybody registered for this?
We'll start with Rob Norman.
Obviously, this is an extremely important matter, the budget. It's maybe not what you thought I was here for tonight, but it is one of the things I signed up for. I couldn't help but note the part about sixty-five percent of our revenue being reliant on sales tax and the city being so reliant on sales tax. We have to do everything we can to protect those sources. I was wondering, and this may be, this is more a question than a comment, I noted in a budget book from last year or the year before, we were getting to the point where very soon we were dipping into reserves, and we're already spending more than we take in. And I can't help but note the confluence of two thousand thirty-one, and maybe this is a question for staff to answer, where are we projected to be in two thousand thirty-one when we start to lose one point two million dollars per year under this arena plan? My reading, if you, my reading when this was coming up for vote was we were at a point where we were in deficit spending, we were running out of reserves, and we were going broke. And that was in a page of the budget book before this arena TIF was put into place. I think maybe staff could address that, although I realize I didn't submit that question beforehand. Where are we looking at in projections as we get in that budget book down this year and in future years down to two thousand thirty-one when we start losing one point two million dollars per year because money is being diverted into the arena TIF? Now, that's what we're trying to stop, and I'm confident we will get a vote on that, but I think those projections and where we're headed in spending more money than we need, than we're bringing in, need to be addressed in that context. Thank you. need to be addressed in that context. Thank you.
Uh, next will be Dan Munson.
Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward six. I believe we need 10 to 12 community service officers that work on a surge team to support Michigan, Auburn, Ole Miss, and LSU football games next year. Uh, their primary function will be to direct traffic and to respond to traffic accidents after a sworn police officer has cleared the scene and deemed it safe. This will free up our sworn police officers to be more visible around campus corner and inside the stadium. We should consider retired officers from Norman, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, and OUPD first for the community service officer positions. These temporary positions should be paid for using our hotel tax revenue. I also believe that we need to stand up an AI and machine learning team within the city of Norman. This team, I believe, should consist of representatives from IT, finance, the city auditor, public works, NPD, MFD, and Parks and Rec for the first year. I believe we need to evaluate which AI and machine learning programs can provide the most accurate data uh, across each division and then down select a one or two platforms for the entire city government to use. The budget for the AI during the evaluation phase for year one should be at least $2,500. I'd also like to see us continue to purchase hybrid police vehicles from our seizures, seizures and restitution fund. Retiring old police vehicles will help reduce our fuel consumption and maintenance costs. I'd like to see us purchase, uh, the equipment to charge fares on our large fixed route transit buses. This would not include paratransit or the smaller cutaway buses. I'd also like to see if we could figure out how to pay employees who typically get paid by the general fund to temporarily be paid by an enterprise fund. If so, I believe we can cross utilize our lawn mowing teams for large pickup on trash day. Thank you.
Um, next would be Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Uh, start with a procedural point. None of this is stuff that we should really be discussing here when there's an actual vacancy in the Ward one seat. A council member who violates their oath of office by pleading no contest to a charge of false certificate-
We're talking about-
By a public, this is relevant. You're, you're doing something that right now where you shouldn't be doing it. I'll say this every time I come up to comment tonight. So you've got it. This, you guys need to act, but there's a violation of Title 51, Section 8, right in front of you. So on to the substance. The proposed budget here is tight as a drum. Due to delayed spending on capital, the all-fund revenues exceed the all-fund expenditures, but the general fund balance is still declining and on the cusp of going red. We're looking, uh, even that good in virtue of service cuts. So I see that we're eliminating microtransit in next year's budget. There are serious delays in capital expenditures. They're down 25% as a whole and larger than that in our utilities. And there are freezes in services. So I don't know if anybody noticed, but the police of all people are getting a small year-to-year budget cut this year. Basically, it's a freeze, though, so it's about the same. Uh, we're predicting zero growth in tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and only 2% in the out years, which to, uh, echo Rob, is gonna be relevant for the next issue as well. But we don't seem to have figured in the higher prices we're likely to be paying on imported goods due to the tariffs we're facing or the likely coming recession. So I think the buzz, budget is actually a reasonable response to the basic problem that the city manager pointed out in his budget letter. We're in a time of stagnant growth where the major, for the major sources of revenue for the city, while the expenditures continue to increase. What I wanna caution you on here, as you think about this going further, is that it's gonna be almost impossible for us to increase gross revenues ourself. If you look at the sales tax trends, they're all the responsibility of either national or regional efforts. And there's not really any path for Norman to increase our own sales tax revenue without incurring even greater costs because of the way we've set up our development. More people actually cost us more money at the current juncture. So we're smart enough to see that we're in some trouble now. I hope we're smart enough to see that we can't give developers enough money to grow our way out of this. We're gonna have to be really, really careful about how we spend money in the future. That's gonna be tough, but I think it's something that we can do together as a city. Thanks.
Next is Trey Kirby. I did not see Trey. And John Skamihorn. Didn't see him either. That's all we have, mayor.
All right.
Oh, wait a minute. Let me, let me double check this one from the back. Vivian Rogers.
Rogers, Ward four. Tough to follow the, the attorney and the philosopher who did a little more homework on the budget than I did. Um, but I have been watching the budget and I have been watching the general fund. And I have been watching the very flat growth in our sales taxes, which we know is a major source of funding for our general fund, um, which primarily goes for public safety. And as an economist who studies this sort of thing, um, it's really hard to trick retail markets. And you certainly don't do it by shifting retail around. So given what, I mean, my colleagues and what the, uh, other economists are saying, I, I think the budget is reasonable, but I don't feel like we're gonna even make it. I see mid-year lots of stress happening there. I'm sorry to, sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but, um, that's, that's what things say. Um, so on that note, we really need to be very mindful of protecting our sales tax base, um, everywhere. And, uh, I don't think we can fool ourselves into thinking that we can outperform the regional market. We, we largely follow what happens in Oklahoma City as a satellite city, even though we have our own gig going, um, and the national economy. So, um, not very optimistic, although I think it's pretty reasonable. We might need to find some more places to make some cuts or to hide, to hedge, so that we don't have to dip into our reserve funds. Thank you.
Nancy Yoc. Mayumi Windler.
Hello, Mayumi Windler, Ward two. All right. I'm a really, really bad capitalist. I don't spend money. I save it. Um, and I only buy things that I actually need. And so the sales pa, taxes that I'm generating for the city of Norman are kinda crappy. They're not good. Um, so that's me, and I'm very, very careful with my finances. Um, other people, maybe they spend a lot. Maybe they feel like they have a lot of extra income for this kind of thing. Um, but the economy is worrisome. And what if all of a sudden, oh, somebody has lost their job? And I know this is happening. People are losing their jobs. They won't be able to spend money, which means no more tax revenue, and so things will have to get cut. What did the budget books look like in 2008, 2009 with that crash? Just curious if there's, you know, you know, just looking at the last recession, just to see if there's anything we can look at to see what happened then, what can we learn from that? That's it.
Evan Dunn.
Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, Ward seven. Uh, what I'm interested in is us creating some savings accounts, some funds. One for some type of a bus-based, uh, tour of science experiments. One would be a fund to, uh, finance students and people to go take tours of power plants. One would be a fund to give citizens scholarships to go to classes at OU to just audit some classes. Here's a, this is kind of a, a MAGA-inspired, um, Make America Great Again. Well, let's set up, let's build some, let's create a fund to build some Harn Homestead-like, um, ways to transport people back to when we were great, back to when we were recycling, back to when we had victory gardens, and we didn't have a lot of running water. We, there were things that we did without. Uh, I think that would be a great thing to add to the budget. Um, uh, what if we created a fund to work with the school system to be compost depots? Uh, put up some, some free compost signs and encourage people to get five gallon buckets and just start their little gardens. Um, what about a fund? Cause I know most people probably think that we ought to change the real estate sales tax ratio. It could be interesting to try it. We can always go back. If we do do that and we do all the calculations and we go through all that, huh, all that data. Okay. What if we also created a fund to transition and to lead the charge to switch to the metric system? Let's switch off daylight savings time. Let's switch on the, to the metric system, unify that, those differences that our students have to think about. That's another idea. Um, so what else? I'd like to see a fund for a Bergy Wind, uh, project somewhere. Uh, I'd like to see, let's see, what else would I like to see in that budget? I'd like to see a fund for some type of a consultant who comes in and just reassesses the way that the city's operating and the brand of the city. If sales tax dollars are projected to be lower, what can we do to induce people to want to live here? That's the power of a fund for an MRI machine. Let's work with more Norman Technology Center and get some technicians on board. We're gonna have to invest in order to change the brand. So, thank you. I, I'm losing time.
That's all. All right. Are there any comments from council, uh, final comments from council regarding the hearing? Hearing none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our motions have been cast and the public hearing is now closed unanimously.
Thank you. The next public hearing for the FYE 2026 budget is scheduled for May 27th, 2025. That's it. All right. On the next item, due to the number of sign-ups on item number 30, comments will be limited, be limited to a total of 30 minutes. I would like to recognize Councilmember Peacock.
Bring in Councilmember Grant.
Yes, I would like, uh, to make a motion to postpone to a date certain of May 20th, 2025.
Second.
Motion's been made to, to, uh, reschedule item number 30. The adoption and rejection amendment and our postponement of the phasing plan required by the Rock Creek Entertainment District Economic Development Agreement to May 20, 2025. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Um, I would go ahead and ask our city attorney, Rick Knighton, to explain what the consequence of postponing till May 20th, 2025 is for the city.
The current economic development agreement approved by council in September of 2024 requires the developer parties to submit a phasing plan on or before March 15th, 2025. They actually submitted their phasing plan to the general manager of the Tax Increment District on March 14th. That provision also requires that the Tax Increment Authority approve or disapprove with specific reasons why, for the disapproval, within 30 days, which would have been April 15th, I believe. Um, because of the issues that we had on April the 8th with four council members being not here, so we only had five, and even then, we didn't have a quorum that night, the developer parties agreed to extend that deadline to April 24th, so tomorrow. If council doesn't take action today, more likely than not, what will happen is you will get a notice from the developer parties that you are in default. Um, there's a specific provision in the Economic Development Agreement that once you get the notice of the default, you have 30 days to cure that default. So 30 days from tomorrow would be, uh, May 24th. So if you postpone this item until May 20th, again, I would anticipate you will get a notice of default tomorrow. Um, that would give you until the 24th. So if you were to come back on the 20th and consider the matter then, that would not result in defaulting the contract, um, that Economic Development Agreement. And the difficulty with default is the remedies that are provided include termination of the, termination of the Economic Development Agreement. It also provides for damages and/or equitable relief, which could be the court essentially giving this Norman Tax Increment Authority the directive to approve or disapprove or whatever the court thought the appropriate remedy was. So by postponing it, again, you're giving yourself a little bit of time. And I understand there is some concern about the pending issue with regard to the referendum petition. You know, my comment on that would be, that's a totally separate issue. This issue is with the Tax Increment Authority. The referendum petition involves the ordinance, and the Tax Increment Authority does not have the authority to approve an ordinance. It's a separate development agreement. Um, this is pretty much a routine matter with regard to approval. It's not going to impact how that case gets resolved one way or the other. But, um, given council's, your motion, um, again, the potential consequences are if you don't approve it within that 30-day time period after receiving notice, that could be difficult.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say that, uh, I've had constituents reach out asking for us to not approve it, and that does not seem to be something that we can do. However, I am comfortable postponing. As a body, we've postponed on outstanding legal decisions, although I recognize by May 20th, we still may not have a decision from the Oklahoma Supreme Court.
Mr. Knighton, when we're talking about damages, we're talking about other things. Can you quantify that?
Not necessarily knowing specifically what the developer parties have in mind, it'd be difficult for me, and I'd be speculating.
Okay.
I mean, usually, the damage amount in a contractual matter, a lot of times, it's the difference between what you expected to get versus what you actually got. Um, so that probably would be a starting point. I, I don't know- I don't know if there are any, if there have been any expenditures to date. There may be expenditures on engineering and architect designs and things along those lines that they may be asking for, but it really comes down to, usually, it's the difference between what you expected to get versus what you actually received.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Rick, what if the, what would be the ramifications if the council voted, but voted no? Not to approve, the tax authority voted not to approve the phasing plan. What would be the situation then?
Yeah, the language in that particular provision essentially states that council cannot, or the Tax Increment Authority cannot unreasonably refuse to approve it. And if you disapprove it, you have to give the specific reasons why you chose to disapprove it. So, that would be the question. What would be the reasons for disapproving it? You know, I know there's been a lot of information out there with regard to what those particular numbers mean, but when you look at what was submitted in the phasing plan, it's consistent with the information that's in the contract. I mean, there's nothing that's a surprise, so to speak. The actual total numbers vary about, vary by about 4.22%. So, it's 4.22% less than the specific number set forth in the develop, in the development agreement, but there's also a provision in there that says that number could vary by as much as 15%. So, that would be the question. What would be, what, council would have to articulate the reason for denying approval of the phasing plan, and then we would go from there.
Okay, and this phasing plan is basically a plan where we're sitting down and they have to, one of the questions that was asked of me was, how can we prove that the developer's going to do the plan on time and we're gonna not overpay him or not underpay him? This is just simply the plan to say, if you do this, I'll do that, and I'll pay you, right?
Well, I know we've all slept since then, but if you remember back when we were negotiating this Economic Development Agreement, one of the issues that we had was that question. How do we, how do we ensure that the developers are going to deliver on what they promised? The phasing plan was actually our idea. So, the initial contractual language did not provide for a phasing plan. We were the ones that came up, or our attorneys, the Center for Economic Development, came up with the phasing plan idea as one of the mechanisms to provide assurances that the developer was going to do what they said they were going to do. If you look further down in the Economic Development Agreement, and there's been some confusion, there's the phasing plan, but there's also development plans. So, this is just the preliminary step with regard to them saying, this is what we intend to build, these are the phases, these are anticipated costs. Within 90 days of actual construction, they also have to submit development plans to be reviewed and approved, that are going to be obviously a lot more in detail in terms of what they're actually building. So, this idea of a phasing plan came from our side of the table, so to speak, and we got them to agree to produce this documentation as essentially information indicating that they're going to do what they said they were gonna do in the Economic Development Agreement.
Councilmember Dixon?
Is, is there any information we're, we're looking for with this postponement? Like, what new information are we gonna learn about between now and May 20?
Councilmember Grant?
The thought is there could be a Supreme Court ruling. I also have a question, was that your only one?
Well, I just, but they're separate because this is the norm, we're wearing our Norman Tax Increment Finance hat right now, and not our city council hats. Is that correct, Rick?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
It, it is separate, but I understand the thought process of hoping, crossing your fingers, I mean, courts tend to do stuff whenever they get ready to do it. We don't have a lot of control over that. And the way that I understand it is just buying a little bit more time to see if you can get a decision before you have to make a decision with regard to the phasing plan, notwithstanding the fact that they are separate. They're related, but they are separate.
Does that case have a date yet?
Papers on the day that they're due. That date can be shortened. I mean, the, the, the earliest, and this, of course, assumes that one party files its papers the day after another party files theirs, the earliest is somewhere around May the 9th. So, you're looking at a timeframe somewhere between May the 9th and May the 29th. And again, courts issue opinions when they get ready to issue them, we don't have a lot of control over that. It does buy you a little bit more time to see if a decision is issued before, before you consider the phasing plan. So, it does give you a little bit of time.
I have a question about potentially terminating the contract and what would be the legal ramifications of that? I've been asked.
Of, of what?
The contract.
Development agreement.
Yes.
What would be the ramifications of what?
Terminating the agreement.
Well, I mean, understand, this is a three-party contract. It's the Tax Increment Authority, it's the County Trust, it's UTC North. We don't have the ability to unilaterally terminate a contract. I mean, it would have to be by some agreement of all the parties that are involved. So, I mean, essentially, you cannot perform, and if you don't perform, you're in breach. If you're in breach, there's damages. Whatever, I mean, it depends upon whatever the court would award. So, we don't have the ability to unilaterally terminate a contract.
And I would just add to that, have you been asked this question by, well, I say constituents because they're asking me, but have you been asked this question by the public?
Which question in particular?
Terminating the agreement and what would happen and if we can?
No.
Okay.
No.
Further comments from council? All right, the motion on the floor is to... Oh, yeah, public comment, let's do that. Has anybody signed up for, well, we don't have?
This is a, a motion to postpone. I'm assuming you just open it up to the floor. Are you limiting to the same 30 minutes?
Well, limit it to that 30 minutes, yes. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on the idea? Evan, it's gotta be on postponement.
On the postponement only, Evan.
Okay, on the postponement. I don't have a problem either way, but I like the idea of us fulfilling our responsibilities. This project is not gonna go away. Let's give them that affirmation, because the vote, it's just gonna determine whether or not we vote. So, let's kind of go along with this idea of, okay, this is gonna happen, how can we make it as good as possible? And I think that demands that we fulfill the commitments that we've made, and let's discuss, I, I wanna diminish some of the venom, you know, and the divisiveness of that, of that issue. And I, I wanna work with these, the designers, I want to get this project as good as possible. So, in that regard, I say, you know, either way, but I would go on, just, let's get it on tonight. Let's, let's move on it.
Sir?
Hi, I don't know if asking a question is out of bounds. Okay. This whole process starts from the ordinance that this...
Tell us who you are.
Sorry, Andrew Rosno, Ward 6, my apologies. This whole process starts from the ordinance passed by council, and my understanding is by the fact that that is subject to the referendum, that is considered something that cannot be acted upon. So, since that fixture of the whole process is frozen, would in everything that follows from it be frozen? Obviously not a lawyer.
Andrew, is it?
Yes.
Rob Norman, Ward 3. I know you all won't answer the question, so I'll answer it. The answer to the question is yes. Absolutely yes. You don't have a phasing plan without an ordinance. Otherwise, you just could've passed a phasing plan. You don't have an Economic Development Agreement without an ordinance. You don't have a project plan without an ordinance. What the law on this point is, with all due respect to the city attorney, in my opinion, he's got it dead wrong. And maybe we're going to have to resolve that, and the people who are the sovereign here will resolve that. If you look at my letter, once the referendum power has been invoked on a city ordinance, so long as the referendum process is pending, the subject matter, not the little four corners of the ordinance, you can't splice them down into different components. The subject matter of the city ordinance is entirely withdrawn from further consideration of the legislative body of the city. And I don't think that you can splice your way away from saying, well, we're wearing our hats as Natifa, not the city. No, you're still the legislative body of the city. There's a reason for that rule, and the reason for that rule is to keep y'all from tinkering with the subject matter of the ordinance while it's pending referendum. The people are the sovereign, you're the trustees. Your power is suspended right now. You can't approve it, you can't disapprove this. I would say constitutionally and jurisdictionally, the most you can do is postpone indefinitely until the referendum process is over. That is it, beginning, end of the story. You can't splice and dice this into different things. Now, what happens if you postpone and approve it? What happens if you do approve this thing? I think you've seen in my letter, what you've just done is you've given them an argument that I don't think is very good here, but yet nevertheless, you've given them an argument to start some more litigation and say they have vested contract rights under the United States Constitution, that trump the referendum petition, that trump any effort on the part of the new council to put this to a vote of the people. Make no mistake, folks, the developers and the opponents of this now realize, they're kinda coming about February 12th or 13th, they came to the conclusion, hey, they looked at the election and they decided, you know, if we lose this referendum petition case, we lose and it goes to the vote of the people.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4 again. I think it should be pretty clear to every member of the city council sitting up there right now that this is a really complicated legal matter that you might need to sit on for a while. So, if I had my druthers, I would have you guys vote against the phasing plan tonight because it's a dog, it doesn't meet what's required by the Economic Development Agreement, but I'm with Rob here. It seems to me that you guys don't have any jurisdiction over this right now, and I think you guys might need to go look at outside council and double-check what's going on here in the way that you did when you looked, for example, at who was eligible to be on the city council. So, I think it makes perfect sense for you guys to postpone this issue tonight if you learn something that makes you sure of what you're doing in the legal terminology, you can come back to that certain date, which looks like it's gonna meet the requirement time, although maybe just barely. But, if you decide that you're on mushy legal ground here doing anything at all, you can come back that night and postpone it permanently, which I think is probably the right answer. But, you know, I don't have JD after my name. I do have PhD, I'm able to read these kinds of things, and it's pretty clear that the Economic Development Agreement only is adopted after the project plan is adopted. There's no agreement without the project plan, and that's something that you should take into account tonight. So, if I were you and I heard two lawyers telling me something different, I would vote to postpone and try to figure it the heck out. Thanks, Steve.
Cynthia Rogers, still Ward 4, still following the attorney and the philosopher. I'd just like to call, Councilmember Dixon raised a question of what new information might, might come forward. Well, I'd like to call your attention to Section 2.02, which talks about review of plans and material changes. This is not just a rubber stamp. It actually says that approvals shall be contingent upon, I'm gonna skip a bunch of words. Evidence of financial and other information or documents submitted as part of the develop, those development plans, the phasing plan, that that provides adequate assurances that the project will be completed as described in this agreement. I saw a phasing plan, I saw some numbers, I saw a plan. There's absolutely nothing in the phasing plan or the development agreement that holds the landowner financially or legally responsible to build an inch of anything. There's no, if you don't do this, there's a penalty. And so, you absolutely could provide public and should provide public assurances as part of the phasing plan. So, what could you do with a delay? You could say, hey, landowners, you have to provide financial assurances that you're going to deliver on the completion of the plan. That is not in existence, or if it is, my question is, please show me in writing where the landowners, the private developers, are held accountable to completing the plan. Even when we tried to do that with the UMP TIF number two, that unraveled. We never got the Lifestyle Center. And I don't see anything, I'm not a lawyer, but I also can read, I also have a PhD, I don't see anything legally binding in any of the agreements, but we could have that with the phasing plan. Thank you.
Hi, I came back. Before I make comments about this, I'm Pam Post, I'm from Ward 5, but what I wanna say first is I wanna thank you all for recognizing your Norman police officers on National Law Enforcement Memorial Day. As an officer's wife, it was always important to us to participate in such events, and we appreciate your all's support of your police department. Now, on the subject of the TIF and the Supreme Court case, as many of you know, I, Paul Arcaroli, and Rick Sondag are the people who brought forth this petition, court case against these developers. We do not stand to benefit from our actions in this. We are here to benefit the citizens of the city of Norman and their residents, who have asked, 10,668 of them, have asked to be given the opportunity to vote on the financing of this Economic Development Center. As people would come up and sign the petition, they would talk about a arena. Signatures were not challenged, they're challenging the gist. The gist explained to them, they understood. The first line in it said, we are here, we are wanting to vote. I am asking you, as one of the people who is on the court case, that you let the Supreme Court go through and validate our claim that the citizens of Norman have the right to vote on this financing. Thank you all very much for letting me speak.
Motion on the floor is to postpone.
I'm Rick Sondag, I'm Ward number five, from Ward number five. I don't have extended degrees like my associates here. I'm just a simple high school teacher, been teaching in Norman for 25 years, social studies. And I think it's kinda sad that our Norman High and our Norman North kids had to leave so soon, because I would've liked them to witness true democracy in action right here. I would like them to see you doing your job and representing the citizens of Norman and not some rich developers who plan to benefit from this. Show them that you're here to do the right thing. I, I can look around the room and I see many people whose children I've taught, and some people who I've taught myself, that are now grown-up citizens and able to vote. So, please, please, postpone, postpone until we know, you've got such an educated community, these people are really, really smart. These people are really, really smart, but sadly, they're uninformed. They don't know the whole story of what's going on. I can't tell you how many times I've talked to somebody about this whole thing and they're like, "What? Weren't we just getting an arena?" No, there's way more to it. And it's up to us to educate them, not just wait to hear from them. Go out and tell them what's going on. That's your job. I'm tired of doing your job. I want you guys to do your job, too. Go out and let them know what's going on before we just ramrod this whole thing down people's throats. I've said this before. My dad used to tell me, three kinds of people, those who make things happen, those who watch things happen, and those who wonder, "What the hell just happened?" And I don't want the citizens of this beautiful city that I've chosen to live in to be a part of Category Three. Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I wasn't going to be the one out of three that didn't say anything. They forced me. It's the right thing to do to delay this. I mean, it's clear. Oh, sure. Paul Thomas, you know who I am, but somebody else may not know. Paul Thomas Arco Rowley, member of Ward Three. I said I wasn't going to say anything, but clearly, the right thing to do here is to delay the phasing plan until after the Supreme Court has decided. We all know what's going on. We all know the positioning that's going on between the developers and between interested parties. I have no interest. I have no financial interest in this. My only interest is in this community. I've been here since 1974. I retired from university, and this town has been very good to me. And I am dedicated to giving back to this town. This here is my dedication. This is my give-back. It's cost me a lot financially, emotionally, physically, and I'm not giving up. And I expect every one of you not to give up. I hope, I hope you do the right thing. Anyway, I appreciate your time. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Based on the information that City Attorney Knighton gave us tonight, I would like more time to make up my mind on this decision, so please vote to delay or postpone. Thank you.
Mark Campbell, Ward Two, postpone. You are not building political capital or goodwill by continuing to contort yourself into an elaborate salty, salty pretzel in order to defy the will of the people. You are over here breakdancing and the public wants to lie and dance. We want y'all with us, what we want to do. Please postpone and honor the will of the citizens. Thank you.
Hello again. Malimi Winler, Ward Two. I'm kind of hungry for a pretzel now. So, okay. I am curious, so this phasing plan, this came from the developers, right? Is this like a negotiation kind of thing where we can counter with our own argument and our own numbers? So they have 15% wiggle room on their numbers. Can we change our numbers and say, "Okay, yeah, we were going to spend," what was it, "235 million, whatever." Can we just say, "Eh, nah, we're only going to spend 220 million this time," and see what they say? I mean, that's something to think about. Can we spend the time thinking about if we want to do that? That's it?
I'll remind you one more time, we're speaking on the motion to postpone only.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, reminder. My name is Bob Anthony. I'm in Ward Two. And just listening to the discussion tonight, I'm a little confused about what the question is in some respects because if I understand right, a real concern is a contract the city of Norman signed that has deadlines. And we have no choice but to approve something at some point. This agenda, I said, adoption, reject, amend, whatever. So are we saying that the only choice here was to approve it or postpone it, but the next meeting's going to have to approve it? And any contract that the city signed, I think, from my experience, yes, I'm a lawyer, retired, obviously, that any governmental contract, it's going to have board of language about has to comply with applicable law, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Or I would have expected that something that would have been negotiated into this contract, taking into account all the contingencies that were going on about deadlines not being met. Whoops. Pardon me. So anyway, I'm having a hard time reconciling these different trains of thought. It's like, we're going to postpone it, but we've got to do it anyway. Can someone explain how that works and why the city would put itself in that position knowing how controversial this whole thing was? And my concern after the election was between the election and this long period of time, longer than the presidential election, before the new people take office, is that things are going to happen and the argument's going to be, "We already spent the money. Can't turn back now." I would tell you that don't throw good money after bad. If our damages provisions are not clear, I don't understand why those wouldn't have been specified if we asked for it, that we'd have a way of calculating that so we can make a reasoned decision to say, "Cut the line. We're done with this. It's not going to work." But it sounds like we don't. So I'm really, how much freedom do you have anyway, is what I'm trying to figure out on this agenda, because it sounds like your only thing is to postpone it and then approve it. And that's disappointing.
Man, there's like 11,602 people that signed the petition. And if you continue with the phasing plan, it's pretty much like telling them you don't care about them. What's the point of you guys being up there if you're going to do that? Right? Like, you're supposed to be representative of the people in your wards of the city. Almost 10% of the whole population signed it, and then, what is that, almost half the voting population signed it? I'm aware of the question, sir. Thank you for reminding me. And in that, to continue with it would be inappropriate. To continue with it would be inappropriate, so I would recommend, highly recommend, that you guys postpone until the Supreme Court rules, the Oklahoma Supreme Court rules. Thank you.
So, I mean, I think there's a pretty well-established precedent on the council, the city council of Norman, to postpone issues that are in the middle of litigation or pending legal decisions. We've most recently did it with the OEC substation proposal. There is current litigation between a property owner and them that could determine whether that project can happen, and we decided to postpone that one until that issue is resolved. I think the decision in front of the Supreme Court does have an overarching effect on the entire project. And so even though we are wearing the authority hat, the issue that we're deciding is separate but is, will be impacted by the Supreme Court decision and whether this issue can go to a vote of the people or not. And I just, my immediate reaction is to feel that it would be inappropriate to take any action on this item while there is pending litigation that could determine whether this even happens or not. It may affirm that it is going to happen and that there won't be a public vote and that the decision the council made in September is the final decision that goes forward. That could be what happens. But it could also decide that it goes to a vote of the people, and then that's a whole nother thing that we'd be waiting to find a result on. So I don't see harm in us waiting, and maybe we don't have a decision by May 20th, but I may still have the same opinion that it would be inappropriate for us to make any decisions on this project until we know the, you know, final answer when it comes to the legal issues involved. So that's why I will, I will support a postponement until the 20th. Thank you.
Got it, Mayor Dixon.
Mr. Knighton, is one of your jobs as a city attorney to protect the city, to give advice to the city council to make sure we don't get the city in trouble?
That's correct.
So, one of Rick's jobs is to protect us, to protect the city. Mr. Norman made a wonderful presentation, but he's an activist that's representing people that don't want this project to be successful. So he's not necessarily operating in the best interest of the city of Norman and the city council. So if we take his advice, we can get in trouble, more so than if we take Mr. Knighton's advice. Because Mr. Knighton's job is to protect the city. Mr. Norman's job is to advocate for his clients. So I just want to make that point.
All right. Councilmember Hinkle.
Just one question of clarification. Was the phasing plan created by the developers or was it created by council?
Created by the developers. Well, the idea in the EDA was our idea, but it put an obligation on the developer to provide the tax increment authority with a phasing plan. And I want to make, try to make this clear. There is a difference between the phasing plan and the development plan. If you look in the contract, there's two separate sections. This is just about the phasing plan. At some future point in time, if we get that far, 90 days before they begin construction, they have to give you a development plan that comes with all those assurances that are being talked about with regard to their ability to construct it. So there is a difference between those two, but yes, the developer is the entity that's constructing those components, and therefore, they're the ones that are telling us when they're going to construct them and what their estimated costs are.
And if they end up not building anything on this site, whether it goes to public vote or not, if nothing is built here, then no tax increment revenue will be given to them?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be essentially a guarantee that if they don't build anything, then they're not going to receive the payments that...
That's correct. I mean, the components are sales and ad valorem. Obviously, if they don't improve the property, the ad valorem property tax rate doesn't increase, so there's no increment there. If there's no retail, they're not generating any sales tax. There's no increment there. So they'd have to figure out, if they've issued bonds or taken out debt with regard to building the arena and the parking garage, they'd have to figure out some other way to finance that.
Thank you.
All right. The question is, is to postpone item 30 to May 20th, 2025. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Give me a minute here, sorry. I'm sorry, I said, give me a minute here. Motion, the motion to postpone passed. Voting against. Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Hinkle, Councilmember Ball, and Mayor Heikala.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 31, preliminary plat for an industrial building in the Charleston Ridge Edition located in the southeast corner of the intersection of West Tecumseh Road and Charleston Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Questions from council regarding this item?
Oh, no, sorry. I'm not too far.
Okay. I'm sorry. There wasn't a line in there.
Good evening. My name is Libby Smith. On behalf of the applicant, the applicant here, WPM Properties, is requesting approval of their preliminary plat. You can see it's kind of halfway between 12th Ave Northwest and Porter on West Tecumseh Road. This is an industrial property, which is already zoned that way. You can see here, it's kind of zoomed in, it's currently unimproved, there's sidewalks along Tecumseh already, and it's kind of right next to the Alton Motorsports, which I believe you guys approved last year. The property is currently zoned industrial, I-1 light industrial in that kind of little Charleston Ridge Industrial Park. So we're not requesting any change of the zoning. This is just the preliminary plat. And here's the proposed site plan. The applicant is requesting a 3,500 square foot warehouse office building. You can kind of see that on the back of the property with parking in front. Access will be off of Charleston Ridge Road, and so there won't be any new curb cuts or anything on Tecumseh. And here's the preliminary plat. It's a little bit less than a half acre, just one lot, so fairly minor. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make any remarks. Madam clerk, do we have any speakers signed up?
Nancy Yock.
Thank you, sir.
Evan Dunn.
Yeah, hi, Evan Dunn, Ward Seven. I just, I support this, but I'd also like to see some work that gets done about zoning and the requirements and expectations, and I'll volunteer to write some of that up.
Any final comments from council regarding... All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Montoya for disclosure.
Thank you, mayor. So regarding items number 32 and the related items 33, the city of Norman Ethics Ordinance directs council members to recuse on items in which they have an actual conflict of interest, a pecuniary interest, or to disclose a possible conflict of interest on a particular item to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest. I have consulted with the city attorney's office on this item, and while I do not have a pecuniary interest, that may vary with the outcome of council's decision on this item. It is possible that a conflict of interest could be perceived due to my firm providing accounting services for the applicant. At this time, I want to affirmally state that I intend to cast my vote on these items, but I will not incur a benefit, detriment, or financial consequence from the applicant regardless of my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We don't need to do anything on that, do we? Okay. Item number 32, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove property located at 281 West Tecumseh Road from the low-density residential designation and place the same in the commercial designation and future urban service area and place the same in the current urban service area at 281 West Tecumseh Road. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the plan.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Did I have a second? Motion and second. Is there a representative of the applicant?
Yes, Mayor. Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Sadler Joyce on behalf of the applicant Storage Oklahoma here. And then also Brian Stanbeck and J.T. Stanbeck, basically the developer and owner-operators of Storage Oklahoma here as well. This is a site that is just north of West Tecumseh Road. This is a site that is just north of West Tecumseh Road, and you can see to the east there is Porter Avenue. This is the same development group, if you remember, about 18 months ago, we did a storage project very similar on 36th Avenue. This is essentially a very similar PUD, you'll see a lot of those same items, and I'll talk about how this is not your typical self-storage developer and your typical self-storage product. The zoning right now is agricultural, the 2025 is low-density residential. Our request is a PUD to add one additional allowable use on top of the current A2 uses, it would just be for this project. And of note, the current comp plan designation going through drafts of it have shown this area as a commercial or multifamily. So, I think the current iteration has this called out for something more dense and intense than low-density residential. Here is a preliminary rendering, it looks very similar to that product on 36th Avenue. It has that masonry requirement that is drafted into the PUD. Residential elements like the windows, the pitched roofs, and a lot of trees and landscaping throughout that we'll show in detail. But first, I want to talk about the efforts that this developer went through to meet with neighbors and to continue to work with them throughout the whole development process. This is what was presented at the very first stage, the pre-development meeting, and there was a substantial turnout. There is way more people at that meeting than we have in total here tonight, and they mainly wanted to talk about drainage. This area has drainage issues. It was discovered some of those issues are separate from this project, but this developer having connections to the development group of the residential neighborhood to the north has taken care of that and has a solution for that completely separate from this. And because of that, and talking through it through Planning Commission and meetings with the neighborhoods even after Planning Commission, we have seen a drastic decline in the number of comments and concerns in this project. But even hearing that, so completely separate from this site plan, this development group changed the drainage plan substantially on this site. And there are changes both to the site plan and to the PUD that happened after unanimous Planning Commission approval. So, I'll call those out tonight. And working with staff, we would like a friendly floor amendment to incorporate those changes into what is voted on tonight. There is a redline PUD in your packet, I'll call out what those changes are. All of those changes have been made in continuing dialogue and concession with the neighbors to make sure that we do everything we can to buffer that north area. So, I will show you here, the two areas that are called out in blue are detention areas. That is what this site could develop out at, it's under the adopted engineering design criteria for stormwater. But hearing that stormwater is going to be the main concern of the neighbors, we went out after pre-development and came back with this site plan. So, that is what was presented to Planning Commission and approved unanimously at Planning Commission. You can see along the north, a substantial increase, it takes up essentially the whole north border. It's big enough for a hippopotamus to swim in comfortably, it is massive. It has increased by over 140% of what the EDC would require. And I'll have a slide that shows you the effective runoff post-development. But again, even after unanimous Planning Commission approval and continued dialogue with the neighbors, we've now added one more north building. It resulted in less than 1% of building coverage change because all the other buildings were reduced, but a 13th building was added to be a buffer and backstop any potential spillover of noise or light just south of that north detention pond. So, from, from pre-development, that was a small detention area along the northwest. It was increased substantially 140%, and then even after unanimous Planning Commission approval, another building was added to be a buffer of light and noise. It is a very detailed PUD, it's one of the most detailed PUDs we've ever drafted. Brian and his work really work hard to draft in the specifics of their project so that if it ever changed hands 10, 15 years down the line, it could never be an all-metal neon-yellow, neon-orange storage facility like you can see driving around. It is committed to be this type of product. There's only one additional allowable use, a lot of the protest letters on this initially objected to general commercial that's not requested. So, it's just one additional allowable use. We've gone so far as to lock in a specific earth-tone color scheme that you see on screen, and that is reiterated in the PUD narrative. It is a single-story maximum height, that's a reduction from two-story that could be built out today under the A2 zoning. Increased landscape buffer and north setback, and so originally we showed up with an A2 setback of 20 feet. Before Planning Commission, we changed that to 40 feet. After Planning Commission's approval, we changed that again to 75 feet. So, we're here today with a 75-foot building setback along the north. There's a detailed landscaping plan that proposes approximately 120 new trees to this site, I'll show you that in a second. Masonry requirement is another added provision. Climate control equipment has to be located on the ground, not the roof. That just shows the level of detail this developer goes to, because that's something we typically never talk about, is where do you put the air conditioning equipment on these buildings? The developer will take over fence maintenance along the north, so those existing residential fences will remain. It'll be on the developer to take it over. There is no dumpster on site, so this is of important note because a lot of times if you think of a storage center, some of the complaints you think of, and you could hear and read in the protest letters we got at the initial stage of this, was about trash and pests. The number one way that this developer takes care of that on their side is not having a dumpster. So, there is no place that people could go and dump unwanted trash and food and things of that nature. It's private solution, private sanitary solution for the office, so the employees that work on site take the trash out and dump it somewhere else at a trash disposal center. There's, as I noted, substantially over-engineered detention area for the site, and we have adopted the full cutoff outdoor lighting, commercial ordinance. The new ones that were added was that setback from 40 to 75. Additional masonry landscaping, masonry language, so 80% masonry is required on things that are visible from Tecumseh Road. We've locked in hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in the PUD document. And additionally, we heard continued comments about light spillover, so we've added that building. But we've also agreed the rear third, the closest third to the neighborhood to the north, will completely shut off lights at 10:00 p.m. We've got a slide that shows the impact of that, and I mentioned the modified site plan with the additional building. So, there is the new modified site plan, it shows all of those things that I mentioned with the setback of the building, the detention pond, there are 120 new trees proposed on site. Specific to this developer, we've added language, they've done this in the past. They have a commitment to work with the city forester to determine appropriate species and locations. We have gone through an extra effort to ensure that Bradford pears are not allowed on this site. That's a concern that we heard, and they are not on the city's approved tree list, so we've adopted that approved tree list. No Bradford pears on the site. The oversized detention pond, so again, as I showed you, the original plan that had the smaller northwest detention area is what the EDC and the code would allow to be built out by increasing it 140%. The flow reduction that will be experienced by the north neighbors post-development will cut in half or more the flow that they experience. So, a two-year flood event after this project is developed and that detention pond is created, we will have 50%, 52% less flow to the north and to those neighbors. So, we've really hit stormwater head-on. It's, it's been an impressive commitment by this development group to ensure that is no longer an issue to these neighbors. Lighting, you all have a very impressive, basically dark sky ordinance with your commercial outdoor lighting ordinance. We've committed to that and gone above and beyond by saying that there is no ability for any pole lights. So, all lights on the facility are mounted to the buildings. And again, we've agreed that the rear third will shut off at the end of operation hours. So, this is what was presented to Planning Commission. Difficult to see, but you can see the lights there that go to the north, and then this is showing the commitment that now that rear third will be completely shut off, so that you can just see visually there. All the way back to the property was approved by Planning Commission unanimously, we've made that concession to shut off the rear third. This is an image of the building looking from Tecumseh. And this is an overhead aerial, you can see the residence to the north with that increased building setback and detention area. So, that's 75 feet there from the existing property line to the closest building. It's one thing, again, to talk about all the masonry and show it on a 3D image. It's another thing to show you products that this developer has done, they're very proud of their work. I think they should be, they like to drive around neighbors to other sites that they've done and shown that they actually put their word into practice. There's examples here of other product types with that masonry and not, you know, the neon-orange aluminum buildings. I want to show the topography of the site. This is from the neighborhood looking back to the development site, and it is a substantial drop-off, which is why they had drainage concerns that had to be addressed. You can see there, there's an existing retention wall and then an existing fence on top of that. But that does go into play, there it is again, looking at the three most impacted homes, if you will, right there just to the north of the site. It comes into play with sightlines, and so this developer did an extensive sightline study to ensure that the proposed building would not be visible from those three homes. So, they took an average six-foot-tall person from the farthest point that they could see in their rear yard that gives them the most visibility all the way back in the back patio. And you can see there the existing retention wall, fence, and then proposed landscaping that'll come on this side of the property. At 75 feet from that sightline, it would not be visible to see this product at a single story, which is locked into place. So, this is a 3D, this is actually existing Google Earth image looking back north. This is a 3D model of that same home that shows the new landscape trees. And this is from the right-of-way, you can see just above the fence line, there's a little bit of building visible from the right-of-way, but when you go to those backyards, again, not visible, that's just the retention wall and then the stockade fence with the new landscaping. To summarize, it's an extensive PUD that locks in a lot of aesthetic and stormwater along with the commercial outdoor lighting, hours of operation, and substantial concessions. And we have seen a drastic downward trend of comment on this project. Only three people showed up to speak at Planning Commission. We've worked continuously with that group to try and ease concerns, and this was unanimously approved by Planning Commission before we've made a couple more concessions that we ask you to vote on tonight. So, with that, happy to take any questions, I know the development team is as well.
The three objections that were still, that still haven't been resolved, can you tell me the nature of those objections?
So, my understanding is, and Brian, I know you've dealt with them more directly, is that there has been protest, protest letters submitted, none of those were formally withdrawn, but all of that was before we went to Planning Commission. That was basically after the pre-development meeting. At Planning Commission, working with that group, only three people showed up to voice concern. And then again, tonight, I'm not aware of any of those neighbors that are continuing to protest, and Brian has talked with them. It's my understanding they're comfortable with it, but have not, you know, given anything in writing to that effect.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
I like what y'all did with stormwater, very thoughtful. Four amendments, am I counting correctly that you need four? One for the setback, another for the 80% of masonry for exterior materials, lighting hours and hours of operation?
Our proposal would be one amendment to adopt the PUD as redlined in your packet.
Okay.
If that works with the city staff.
What does city staff think? Does that work? Okay. And then my next question is allowable uses, which are a little interesting. So, I'm reading mini warehousing for self-storage, obvious. Detached, single-family principal dwelling unit, family daycare home, allowed with a site plan amendment. General-purpose farm or garden, allowed use with a site plan amendment. Type 1 mobile home, allowed with a site plan amendment. Accessory buildings, including barn shed and other farm buildings which are not part of the main building, and shall not contain a full kitchen, allowed use with a site plan amendment and short-term rentals. I'm just a little curious. What are the odds? I mean, like, do people turn storage units into housing or short-term rentals? I could see some of the other stuff, but I'm just curious.
So, all of those are allowed under the current zoning A2, and this actual transaction is contingent upon the rezoning, but hasn't exchanged hands yet. And so, Storage Oklahoma doesn't own it, the Sterling's still do. If something happened, like, if just to say the Sterling's decided they weren't going to sell and it was a breach of contract and that ended up in a lawsuit, their home would still be on the site, but without the A2 allowable uses, now they don't have an allowable use under the new zoning that just calls for the storage. So, basically, we're only adding one allowable use, everything else is just retaining what the current property has, am I right?
With the site plan amendment that comes before planning and council?
Exactly right, and that, that's been added actually through working with the planning department. We, all that stuff about with the site plan amendment, I think is new to this PUD. And that sort of goes to your comments on a lot of our items where it is, well, what are we approving here? You know, is it one project specific? So, I think it's kind of a middle ground to acknowledge you're not losing value in the property by losing allowable uses that they have today, but acknowledging that you would have to come back before this body to modify the site plan.
Right, and then that would give neighbors an opportunity to come do the process again.
Absolutely.
Voice their concerns. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman? You mentioned the stormwater solutions. One of the things that we talked about when we met was the, I guess, existing issues that some of those houses and Little River Trails are experiencing with flooding. And that was maybe some of their original concern about this project, is we're already having a problem, and it's a empty field basically, and by building this, is it going to make our problem worse? And from what I understand, the developer, neighbors have identified what the problem was, is, and is remedying that, can you maybe go over that situation?
Absolutely, I'm happy to. This slide maybe shows maybe the work of the development team the greatest. So, you can see there on this slide, there's called out a proposed flume. And so, originally, Little River Trails had plans that talked about a proposed flume essentially in that area, so north of this project's property line. That was not ever put into place, and so the plat for that neighborhood does have a detention easement in that location. So, essentially, what originally was planned after pre-development and around Planning Commission, presented at Planning Commission was, okay, we will ensure that that flume goes in in that plat of detention easement. That would resolve the issues that are separate from this project. In working with acquiring easements from some of the surrounding landowners, we now have a solution that will keep the stormwater completely south of, let me get to the right slide. Basically, our stormwater improvements that are going to come in, in the concrete flume, will now remain south of the neighborhood. And so, the benefit of that is we don't have to go into that plat of easement and rip out anything that's in the detention easement, which is quite a bit. And you don't have to coordinate with the neighbors to take down the fence and then put the fence back up. So, what is planned now is the concrete flume to be on the Sterling's property south of the residential fence and then over to the Hans Meyer property to the west.
And that's where drainage currently would go anyway?
That's right.
Okay. And, okay, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, thank you, sir. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only, once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, are there?
Start with Daniel Munson? Pass, okay. Stephen Ellis?
Hey, Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I just had a quick question, and it was actually about the language of the item. So, we're... So we're placing something that had been in the future urban service area and then putting it in the current urban service area. And I was just wondering, what is the import of that in the sense, you know, for sort of like budgetary reasons? Are we more on the hook for providing services and that sort of thing because it's in the current service area than in the future service area? And so, I mean, obviously, that's going to be related to the issues involving the budget and the fact that when Norman expands things, it usually costs more than we get in tax receipts. So what is this, what is the budget implication? This is the big question. But the little question is, what does it mean to change from future urban service area to current urban service area?
Cynthia Rogers. Cynthia, did you say pass? Nancy Yock? I don't see her, but she signed up in person, so. Okay, that's all.
That should be on there.
You probably are, Evan. Yes, you are.
Evan Dunn, Ward seven. Gosh, we have so much stuff in America, don't we? I think we should all just thank China. Thank that, that production system. Thank that supply chain. Okay, so I don't have a problem with this. It's built on current ordinances. But again, I'd just like to reemphasize that we need some type of a requirement to make America garden again. Victory Garden, something. And I'll volunteer.
That's all in. All right. Here's Planning Director. About going from future, from future urban service area, where are we going?
Future to current.
Future to current. Because I don't know that answer.
Good evening, Jane Hudson, Planning Director. So yes, when the 2025, sorry, I'm short here. When the 2025 was adopted, they had areas on that plan that were designated future urban service area. That means they didn't have the infrastructure in place, and so it would come to council to make the determination if you would bring it into the current urban service area.
Thank you, ma'am. A lot easier answer than I thought. All right. Anything outside of council? Not seeing any yet. You'd like, yes, sir.
The surrounding area is current service area, correct? Like the neighborhood to the north, to the west?
I think so.
Did you have a map? Okay. The area to the north, yes, because that's got the single-family homes. I believe the area to the west is not currently, but the area further west is.
There's also a carve-out. I don't have it on screen. I know it's in the packet, but the hard corner here to the east is in current. So it's just kind of, I think, development hasn't come here yet and made that request. Nor is it south.
South, yes.
And so this, by being not, you know, future area, it's kind of creating its own little island. Right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I feel like this is appropriate, a redesignation. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
Do I need to make that motion now to approve this with the three changes, or is that coming up?
It will be under the ordinance.
Got you. I'll be quiet.
Which is the next one? Okay. Item thirty-two, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 land use and transportation plan so as to remove the property located at 281 West Tecumseh Road from low-density residential designation and place the same in the commercial designation in future urban service area and place the same in the current urban service area. My motion is to adopt what I just read. Councilmember, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item thirty-three, an ordinance rezoning property located at 281 West Tecumseh Road from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Plan Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading.
Motion.
Second.
A motion second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions?
Okay, motion to amend PUD narrative as redlined in the agenda packet.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended. Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend the ordinance as redlined in the agenda area. Okay. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to amend the PUD narrative as redlined in the agenda packet passes unanimously.
Okay, then do I need, second reading's done, so I'm doing. Second reading. Motion, we have speakers?
Dan Munson? Pass.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended, section by section. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second.
I'm so sorry. These mics are just going crazy tonight. They just turn off on their own, sorry. All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as amended on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
A motion second. Motion on floors to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole?
Adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number thirty-four, Norman preliminary plat for Tecumseh Road storage, a planned unit development located at 281 West Tecumseh Road. I'll, do I need to do that as amended? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion.
A motion second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? None. Any further public comments regarding this item?
Stephen Ellis? And Evan? You good? Okay.
Comments? The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number thirty-five, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 land use and transportation plan to remove property located near the southwest corner of the I-35 and West Indian Hills Road intersection from the mixed-use designation and parkland designation and place the same in the mixed-use designation from future urban service area to current urban service area and removal from special planning area four. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant? Come here.
Let me click through these slides real quick to get us to the item. I apologize. All right, here we go. So thank you very much for your time that you've given us on this project. This is a remarkable project, and first I must say, I am not going to do it justice. I wore a green tie for Richard McCown. Richard could not be here tonight. This is Richard's project. He designed this project. He's put a ton of his heart and effort into this project. He unfortunately could not be here tonight. He's been at every hearing on this item, but unfortunately was pulled out of town tonight and could not be here, so I extend my apology for his absence. I'll do the best I can, but I am not Richard McCown, and I'll be a very poor imitation of that. But, but I'll do what I can to take you through the item. So we are at North Norman up here. I'm Sean Rieger. Chris Anderson with us as well from SMC Engineers, who did the engineering on this. We're in North Norman at I-35 and Indian Hills Road. You see it right there. This is that large cotton patch, basically, that's been farmed as cotton for many years. It's right there at the intersection of 35 and Indian Hills, which very likely will be a turnpike at some point in the near future, and 36 Avenue on the west side of it, Crystal Springs neighborhood to the south, and CCS Athletic Complex to the southeast corner of it. About one hundred thirty, thirty-one acres, and again, relatively flat land. The zoning of it currently is A2 agricultural. I think we can probably all agree that this is not going to be an agricultural site long-term at that location next to I-35 and Indian Hills. And so we feel that it's time to go ahead and proceed. The owner of this project and Richard McCown think it's time to go ahead and start planning such a large project and make sure we have the planning in place so that when the infrastructure around it gets put into place, they are ready to go. They really have incredible vision, I think, for this project, and they're ready to put it forward. So on the left is the agricultural zoning. On the right is the 2025 project of mixed-use future urban service area. I'll have you note the green striping on the south and the west edge of this site in 2025 plan. Importantly, this developer has honored that, and you'll see that in just a moment. So the proposal is a large tract of many different uses. You see the red is development area number one, and that is basically the large, intense, commercial zone. So this would be virtually everything commercially. This could be anything and everything in our commercial zoning district that we allow, hospitality, restaurant, office, commercial, retail, all of it. And then on the upper far-left, at the intersection of Indian Hills and 36 Avenue, is probably intended to be a filling station, a gas station. It, too, allows for all the commercial uses on that site, but as a small parcel, it's probably going to be a gas station, is the plans. In the middle of this, you see number five, sorry, man, there, you see five complexes in the middle there. Those are basically, and I know you've heard Richard talk about this before, of how many different sites do we have for three hundred unit apartment complexes? And he's talked about that eloquently over a long time now. He's put five of them in here. And the middle of this site is five large apartment complexes. And then the donut concept that you've heard Richard talk about before, with parking garages in the middle of each one of those. And basically residences ringing around it with common area atriums of open space in the middle of each one of those. But that is basically five three-hundred unit apartment complexes, about fifteen hundred people. And then on the lower left, you see the number four. That is single-family residential. And I'll show you in just a moment how that's going to be really a very unique, single-family residential. That is probably a little bit of the future of what we're going to see in planning for residential as we go forward. So let's look at, that is the two residential sites. You see in the middle is the large multifamily sites, and these are multifamily complexes of high intensity with commercial first floors as allowable use. And then on the lower left, again, is that single-family units that allow for single families with accessory dwelling units. They allow for a very tight, small, compact project of housing that we think is probably the future, but allows for that buffering over to the Marla neighborhood and this Crystal Springs neighborhood to the south. Just some preliminary plat information. It's about five multifamily with the retail space on the floor lots. It's a hundred and forty-three single-family lots, and the commercial lots are twenty-two different lots spread across the north and the east side of the lot. Parkland is about seven and a half acres. I'll show you that in just a moment. And the open space is about fifteen acres. The building setbacks, this is something we'll talk about, and I'll show you a graphic of this in just a moment. But on the lower left, the residential units there have basically a building setback of four feet that's permitted where there are garages and a minimum of twenty feet front yard setback for the garage. The rear of ten, and the sides vary because this allows for single-family attached. So you could put the single-family against the lot line or move it off, but always a basically a six-foot separation. We'll talk about the setbacks in just a moment. And to show you the green space, this is the overall green space, about twenty acres or fifteen percent, I should have said percent earlier, fifteen percent of green space. The parkland is at the bottom. You see kind of the teal shape, and I'll show you in just a moment how we got to that. But that's about seven and a half acres. This was the one change we made, a significant change in this project from the moment it was filed. When we went to pre-development, there were some neighbors from generally the south, mostly from Crystal Springs addition to the south, and they had some concerns about how this project abutted them. And you see on the lower left of this screen, kind of hard to see, it's a little blurry, but we had single-family residences right up against the property line. The neighborhood was concerned about that. We also went back and looked at 2025, realized it had the green strip across the bottom and the west. And Richard, to his credit, of course, went back and said, let's fix that. Let's put green buffering across the bottom. And as far as I know, the neighborhood was happy there. I don't see them here tonight, and they did not file any protest. And at Planning Commission, really, nobody spoke. There was zero speakers at Planning Commission, and it seemed to be very well received. So the parkland also was the second part of that. Kudos to James Briggs and the Parks Department. They helped us greatly on this. Richard sat down with them, and they talked through what's a, what's a good way to really do a park solution. And so on the right, what you're seeing is the change. So across the bottom, we put more green space right up against the neighborhood, and we took out what was to be a commercial building right in that sort of arc area of the pond and instead put in a large park. So it's now public parkland. There's really two major pieces of public parkland. Just on the north tip of that pond area is a large park area, just slightly less than a football field, basically. And then the large park area right next to the pond, you see just on the north side of the pond. But those are two significant parkland areas, and they fit well with the residential that wraps around the football field area. It's not a football field, per se, but the size of it. And then the trails that will correspond from the single-family over to that other large park space. So we're really very pleased with the way that worked out. And again, we're thankful for James Briggs and the park staff that kind of helped us through that. This is in context. You see it now. So basically, the Marla neighborhood to the west is a rather old neighborhood, frankly. It's been there a long time. And so that was back in the day when they did very large lots and homes on those sites many, many years ago, Crystal Springs to the south as well. But this site, we've certainly paid homage to the green space next to it, so we have a significant buffer. And again, those neighborhoods did not protest and have not spoken out against it that I'm aware of. So I think it's been fairly well received. What I want to show you, and this is where Richard would really be much better than I tonight to speak through this, but the single-family product to the southwest side of this site is something that Richard is really, really proud of and is really looking forward to putting into place. And we're all probably familiar with the Wheeler District in Oklahoma City. It's a district that's been very well-received in central Oklahoma. ULI and a lot of groups really look very closely at that district for its cutting-edge development work. Richard views this area on this site as sort of imitating that. And you see Wheeler right there. I do want to use this slide to illustrate, there is one point of concern that Traffic's Department raised, and we discussed it at Planning Commission. The issue is, on the lower right, you see where there's not driveways cutting in. Those homes are two feet off of the building, of the front property line, and that's what we propose. On the left, where there are driveways, those buildings are four feet off the property line. It was a concern of staff, and I don't speak for them, but I'll try to illustrate what they were concerned about, was that backing out of these sites would be a hazardous condition coming into the roadway. We discussed that at length at Planning Commission, and I'll show you a slide of how we think it's safe. Planning Commission felt comfortable with it, and Planning Commission unanimously approved this project. And in fact, Commissioner Brewer suggested even going narrower to two feet in his comments at Planning Commission. We're okay with the four. We're not pushing the edge here, but we feel comfortable with the four. I think that should be approved tonight as we've requested. So to look at some of the imagery, and Richard, to his credit, designed all of this, and I really wish you could hear him tonight better than I, but this is the imagery. I really wish you could hear him tonight better than I, but this is the imagery. And again, this is just more or less massing imagery. This is a large enough project. We're not down to the details yet, of course, as to what these specifically look like. But as a massing concept, we can tell you now what the massing would roughly look like, and again, subject to a lot of changes going forward. But this is the overall site plan, and we start looking down from the north. So, we're looking south across this site from Indian Hills, and basically, you're seeing large commercial all across the northern area of this and across the I-35 area to the left. And then you see those five 300-unit apartment complexes in the middle, and you see the single-family product up on the upper right. So, we're looking south. We're going to kind of just hover down a little closer now, and probably there would be a major street coming down through the district, but with on-street parking, significant tree space, and Richard's apologetic in that when he had this made, they failed to put the trees everywhere, but there would be trees lining all of these streets, and they simply didn't get put into these areas. And then as we look from the southwest, now we're looking to the northeast, and we're looking across the single-family area just off 36th Avenue. So, 36th Avenue is on the left, and Crystal Springs addition is to the right, and you see the pond area right out there in the middle. And you start to see this massing. That is basically the roughly football-sized area park up in the middle of those five apartment complexes. There is the pond again, and I think they actually missed a walkway across this pond. Then you'll see it in plan. There was actually a walkway that cuts through there, and they didn't put it in the three-dimensional drawing, but you can start to get a feel for the residential streets on the left and how they have on-street parking in addition to the housing. That's looking to the north and sort of to the northwest, so that's the big pond feature, the apartment complexes. Now, we're looking over the top of the single-family area, which is on the southwest side of this site. We're looking directly east now. Forget the mountains. Not sure why we have mountains, but this is, oftentimes, you get some artistic imagination from renderers that do these drawings. Councilmember Peacock, you can appreciate that when they do that. But you can see this site now as we're looking down in the midst of the residential units. I do want to focus on, you'll see right in the middle of the screen, one of these blocks has, there's three blocks that have a vegetated strip, a tree area, and one of the concepts they want to do here with those three blocks and sort of a new idea is to give each of those blocks their own funding component, and each block gets to decide what their common area in the middle is going to be. Might be a fire pit, might be a gazebo, might be some sort of an athletic feature of a court or something. But that's something they want to do, so each block gets its own ownership of its open space and its common space and can really become a community feature within those few dozens of homes that surround it. Something pretty neat. You can see now, you start to see now, too, Richard's really signature piece that he often does here. I wish we had a pointer I could show you, but sort of on the left, you can see those homes coming out to the street, and the access to the garages is behind it. And then on the right, just right in the lower part of the screen there, you can see how the garages are pulled back, and the residential part of the house is pushed forward to the street. I'll have a few better images of that, and this is what we're talking about there. So, this would be a typical street scene with the garages set back, the housing brought forward, on-street parking, which is part of the reason why we think we're in a safe condition here, because we have on-street parking that also slows down the traffic and gives you additional distance as somebody is backing out. So, pretty typical Richard McCown product here, where he's pushed the garage back, brought the living area to the front, and really created a wonderful street scape where people can enjoy that as they're walking down the street. The front porches come right up to the street. The garages are pushed back with a little bit of on-street parking, not a lot, but just enough to supplement the parking for each of these houses. And there you see again a little bit of supplemental on-street parking and the houses with the garages pushed back and the front porches and the living pulled up to the street. Just a similar scene again. This is down in that single-family area, and these lots are small. These lots are roughly about two, as little as 2,000 square feet for the lot, but up to about 3,000 square feet, so we're really intending to sort of pack this in with ADUs and height variances going up to about three stories if you could. So, these would be a compact complex. These also allow for sort of an enhanced business aspect. We've seen these in some of Richard's products before, where he allows for one employee in addition to the resident. He allows for a two-by-two sign to be put on the, on the house itself, so that's a little bit more than what you allow in R1 right now. R1, you're a little bit more limited to that. So, the intention being to really have people work here, live here, play here, all in one, all in an inclusive environment. So, I think that's probably it. In summary, there is the site plan in context. Again, really, everything in mixed uses, 1,500 multifamily units, 143 single-family units, 15 and a half percent open space, seven acres of parkland, unanimous at Plan Commission, and really quite glowing. I got to tell you, they were very complimentary of Richard's work, and I don't think there was a negative comment, one, on the Plan Commission commentary as this went through the project, and not a single speaker came to the podium either. So, with that, happy to answer any questions. Chris Anderson, the engineer as well, and we thank you very much for your time.
Yes, I appreciate all the mixed uses. I think there's a nice spread of them. I was just curious about development area four. Home occupations will be allowed in a slightly greater intensity of use than as found in typical R1 developments. Such business activity will be limited to types of businesses that do not require more than two customer or clients parked cars at any given time. No retail activity or sales of merchandise will be allowed. Employees will be limited to one onsite worker, and patronage would have to be by appointment only. Minimal non-illuminated identification signage of no more than four square feet. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
In the area attached to the surface of the dwelling will be allowed to denote the business being carried on within. So, I'm a little curious, when you say a little greater intensity of use, but you're not selling merchandise or anything. I know that we just recently allowed hairstylists in home occupation, but I'm curious who else this is intended to serve?
Well, anybody that can fit the criteria, but let me kind of highlight, Councilmember, for instance, in your current R1, you don't allow any additional employees, so that's additional here. You can only be the live-in occupant, basically. You don't allow really any signage, I don't think, certainly not four square feet of it, and it doesn't really allow customers at all in the current R1. This one allows more, no more than two customers. So, it's just tweaking a few things that allow a little bit more in the sense of a business aspect. I don't have an example exactly of what that would be, but anything that fits.
Maybe a therapist, a lawyer.
Could be. Certainly. Accountant.
Service industry, or like a service, more so than retail sales.
Yeah.
Okay. Embroidery. Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was really my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. So, a couple of questions. First one, the stormwater management. So, it's a big empty field, and it's pretty flat.
It is.
Currently. The pond would be handling all of the runoff from the whole development at full build-out? And then where is it going from there?
Pulling up the engineer here, he is going to talk through that. Chris Anderson, who you've met many times.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers. You're correct, the site generally drains from the north to the south. The majority of it goes towards the southeast corner. There is a existing storm sewer that was, I think, put in probably 10 years or so ago in anticipation of the development of this site, some rather large storm sewer that goes up through the school site and terminates at that property line. The detention pond, yes, will handle all of the developed site, and will also be, again, in the images that they put together, they kind of show it as all as one pond, but in our design, we're showing it as a series of ponds that will act as a treatment train, again, to help filter the water through there.
Okay. And so, the pond is, has water in it all the time, right?
Yes, yes, but will also be detention.
But will be able to handle a significant rain event?
Absolutely.
Running off of all the concrete.
Yes, and I did say most of it drains to the southeast. There is a small area, I say, it's probably about 15 acres that drains to the southwest, and this came up during our pre-development meeting. The two lots there in Crystal Spring there at our southwest corner, there's actually a drainage area that goes right through those lots, and they brought lots of pictures of flooding issues. So, what we designed here, I think, I, most of the time, I just get to say up and stand up and say, "We're not going to make anything worse than it is." In this case, again, I think we're going to help that situation. We're picking up all that area that was draining to the southwest and actually taking it over into that pond also, so that will eliminate most of the water that comes down into those lots right now.
Okay. Thank you. And then, we talked about the flexibility of this in the, from the use standpoint, where, you know, I wouldn't anticipate there being this much of a demand for office space, suburban office space, and I probably wouldn't anticipate there being this much of a demand for commercial, but I could foresee there being a very increased demand or filling in existing demand of housing. And so, wanted to make sure that this site plan was flexible enough to adapt to housing demands, a lack of commercial or a lack of office demand, if that's the case. And that, you mentioned that the whole site is really mixed-use adapt as far as, it's not just going to be commercial and then office and then high density and then single-family over here. It has the ability to have mixed use in the commercial, mixed use residential and commercial where the office is, and then the ground level of the high-density apartments has the ability to be commercial as well.
So, Councilmember, as we were sitting here tonight, I knew you were going to ask me that question because we talked about it yesterday, and I was looking at the uses, and I have to admit to you, I don't see it written in the uses. So, we would welcome a friendly amendment if you put into the uses for development area one to allow for mixed-use vertical residential, and I apologize that I don't see it written in here. I think that was Richard's intention. I can tell you, on development area three, which is the mixed-use multifamily, it is written in there, that the first floors can be any of those commercial uses, and I think Richard's intent is for quite a bit of commercial to go in there. And then we just talked with Councilmember Grant as to the residential area to have some commercial uses as well. So, I apologize. I don't see it written in there. I know that was our intention, and somehow we didn't get it written. And so, if we want to do a friendly amendment to allow for mixed-use residential, I would suggest if we do that, that it be written such that if it affects the traffic or parks, that we would have to reflect that in the change. If we come up with anything different, that has to reflect that. The engineering has to accommodate the additional residential.
At whatever appropriate moment, I would, I would propose that we make that change. Okay. Got it.
You want me to do it?
Thank you, Councilmember, and I apologize again.
Like I said, I just want to make sure that it's, I mean, this is really the, by my observation, this is really the last very large piece of property that's undeveloped on I-35 between Norman and Edmond, and so, of this size, for sure. And so, I think it's really important what we do, what happens with it, and I think it's important that it be as flexible as possible to adapt to whatever demands, especially when it comes to allowing housing.
Right.
To be a part of the whole thing wherever, if they think that's, you know, necessary.
And I think you can have it in no better hands than Richard to do this. This particular property owner has always used Richard McCown for their designs. They did the Carrington Lakes addition, J&amp;J, all of those additions Richard designed and lives in Carrington Lakes and has been the steward of all of the design work in those areas. So, he's very passionate about this project, and I know he carries forth those same concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make some decisions. Mark should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clark, are there any speakers signed up for this item?
Dan Munson, Word six. So, before I talk about this, I want to make sure everyone is aware. Oklahoma City Thunder, 118, Memphis 99.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, so, you know, I've talked about, you know, Norman being the least densely populated city in the nation with a population of under 150,000. I think that this is a good infill property for us. I like that it's mixed use. So, there's, when I initially looked at this, I was concerned about I-35. How far off of I-35 will this property be? And is there a possibility that they could do eminent domain on part of this property and expand I-35? And what kind of impact would that have on your property? The second thing that I had, and possibly the engineer could answer this, it was just the noise. Whenever you're that close to a major interstate, what kind of noise is that going to generate? And I'm always, so I lived in Denver right before the new airport was built, and there wasn't a single house out by the airport. And now, there are millions of houses out by the airport, and what do people complain about? Airplane noise. And people in Norman, Oklahoma, they built houses around railroad tracks, and what did they complain about? Train noise, and it took us 10 years to overcome that. And so, there's always an expense, whether it's just complaints about noise. So, I'd maybe just address that. That would be great. Thanks.
Steve Ellis, Word four. The way I see it, this project actually has three problems. I was going to say two, but Dan was exactly right. It is going to be noisy. My parents live with their backyard on the Kilpatrick Turnpike, and they're old and deaf, so they cannot hear it, so it's okay for them, but even I can hear it when I'm up there, and I'm pretty deaf, too. So, it will be noisy. I think that will make it unattractive, but you know, maybe the market will provide. Second point, though, I think is more important. This is going to be costly to Norman under our current development cost structure. Third point, and I'll explicate that last one here in a second. It's a turnpike magnet feeding what OTA wants, which is to crack open undeveloped Norman to turnpike big businesses, and that's actually probably the most serious problem, is it really undermines our efforts to keep OTA from taking Normanite houses. So, the first thing, costs are rising right now because of the tariffs. Things are out of our control, and because we haven't updated any of our cost structure for development in Norman, if they build this anytime soon, we'll take a bath in providing water capacity, sewer capacity, fire service, police service, and other entitlements that the developer gets when they get into the current urban service area. This sort of development is a budget buster. It doesn't build on sort of density in Norman. It just is edge development. But secondly, though, and I think probably most importantly, voting yes here undermines your stated opposition to the OTA access plan. It's unfortunate for the developer because they're sort of caught in a bigger fight, so it's no criticism of them, but access is actually a development plan, not a transportation plan, and any hope of getting OTA to back off of taking homes in Norman is to not cooperate with their development plans. They are less likely to build the darn road at all if all they get is a road. What they're trying to do is replicate the Kilpatrick Turnpike, which, as I mentioned, I know something about. So, I don't think this would get built soon if you approve it, so you don't have to say no to this forever, but you can wait and see how the OTA stuff turns out before taking a chance on this kind of proposal. I think you should go no anyway because it will be costly edge development, but for reasons that are really not the developer's fault, this is an OTA issue, and you will undermine your stance on OTA if you vote yes on this. Thanks.
Evan, Cynthia Rogers, sorry. Evan, you're after Cynthia.
Still Cynthia Rogers, Word four. This time I
This time I didn't follow the lawyer and the philosopher, just the philosopher. Um, so, I, I always liked, you know, Richard's ideas, and, um, I figured the market will work out whether it's too noisy or whatever, but it, being near a turnpike is noisy, but I just wanted to offer you a little bit of math. Fifteen hundred multifamily homes, that is three times the amount in the phasing plan that you looked at earlier tonight. Hundred and forty-three single-family homes, well, it's really hard to know how to compare that because in the phasing plan it says up to, which could include zero or a hundred and seventy-seven. Mixed-use, open space, no TIF required, I think this is just a good example that development and markets will be served without any massive, um, government intrusion, so I, I, I worried a little bit about taking away a big field. I know we engineer solutions, I'm not sure where the stormwater goes after it collects up into that pond. Um, I mean, I think it feeds our system somehow, there's got to be down, downstream impact, so, um, that would be my major concern with this project.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Evan Dunn, Word seven. Uh, yeah, I, I don't really have a problem with this, uh, like Cynthia said, you know, uh, Richard does good work and, you know, he's put in a lot of work on this. Um, I, I, I do really kind of, I'm bothered by the fact that it, it seems as if we don't really take into account the power that we possess for creating and growing, nourishing fruits and nuts, like, if I were him, I would be emphasizing that the trees in this development, they're all going to be pecans, peaches, and native species that are low water need, you know, low maintenance. Um, oh, Sean, I like that tie, you should wear that more often. I know, I know, it's, it looks good. Um, that, 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 that's just something, it's a, uh, it's a personal sensibility, but it's also, it, it doesn't seem to be percolating out into the community, so that's just kind of something that I, I feel about the project. Otherwise, I mean, it looks great, I like the ideas, the detention pond, kind of like Cynthia said, like, there, surely there are other ways of directing the, the water and the rainfall to provide the nourishment or the, the hydration for the pollinator gardens, for the victory gardens. I think that that's going to be something that people are going to appreciate in the future, and every amount of stormwater that we can reduce the area of those detention ponds, that just means that there's more housing. That's just solving another problem, and you're adding to the food supply. So, uh, anyways, just that cultural thing and, uh, you know, growing food. What else do I talk about?
That's it? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Councilmember Pink.
I think there's been demand for this to be developed already. Um, it's where the, the anticipation or the, I, when we were talking about the possibility of Costco locating in Norman, this is where that discussion was focused on. Uh, we have 2019 bond, voter-approved bond projects to widen Indian Hill Road, another bond project to widen 36 that we all know about. Uh, we included funding in that bond, uh, to go towards redoing the interchange at I-35 at Indian Hill Road to try to get ODOT to do it faster, and this is before we knew about, before any of us council knew about the, uh, turnpike proposal, so I, you know, it's developing all around here already, um, and I think it would regardless of the turnpike in this particular location, so I don't know that, that this development is based off of a turnpike or not. I do know that five or six years ago, this would have been a big commercial strip mall with a massive parking lot facing I-35 and single-story, and it probably wouldn't have included any residential, and so this is the best, uh, site plan I've seen so far for this property, and, um, I think there is a lot of merit in green space and preserving it, especially around here, and I've heard some things about this property and some of the native grasses that grow there that are pretty interesting, um, but, you know, I think this is in an area that has become urbanized, and it's, will help address a lot of issues with housing demand that we know we have a shortage of, so I think it's a, a good one to go with currently, and I don't, I don't think it has anything to really to do with the turnpike, so, thanks.
Councilmember Pink.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to give the developer some kudos on doing some things on an edge development that typically you only see in core developments, um, that's basically small lot sizes, uh, minimum setbacks between the buildings, between the houses, so more density, houses closer together, minimal setback on the road, you've got a two-foot setback, which means the porches are basically right on the sidewalk. He'll hear this later. Uh, you know, by doing that, you create a sense of community in the neighborhood because you've got porches instead of driveways fronting, you know, that's the predominant architectural feature. I really appreciate the, um, the green alleys behind the building, uh, I really like the rear-loaded lots on the residential side, I really like the ground floor commercial, uh, and, and the multifamily spaces, um, the on-street parking, uh, all the green space, the amount of detention, it's not just, it's not an afterthought, it's an asset on the project. Uh, there's just a lot, a lot working for this, and I mean, I know there's, there's concerns with the OTA, and there's concerns with other things, but I, I've got to share the sentiments that Councilman Mahalman had, and I think this is a really great site plan and, and much better than what we would have seen not just five years ago, so, thanks.
Did you have another comment? Councilmember Hall?
No. You got him out of order, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember. I'm getting you out of order everywhere.
All right, the, uh, you know, the land use, I think, is pretty consistent with surrounding area, just the changing of, uh, the mixed-use and park to mixed-use. I, I don't like the loss of the parkland, but, um, you know, I don't have any problem with that particular item. With the rezoning and the preliminary plat, I wish there'd be more, uh, uh, kind of more designed into it to help with the costs of the added, uh, of the infrastructure with the traffic impact. I don't know what form that would take, but, you know, I'm perfectly, uh, uh, fine expecting to be the lone wolf on the, on the council here, but, uh, just my opinion that the, the plat should have a little bit more that addresses the, uh, traffic, um, maybe designed in, it should have a little more green space, it should be providing something unique and beneficial to the, the community. Now, I understand that it is relatively unique, but I don't think it really, uh, has that enough impact or dazzle quality that really, uh, wins me over. Um, I think it could be better. On the land use, I don't like the loss of agricultural land into, uh, this, now what's the natural progression of this land? Agricultural, um, is in kind of a funny spot. Uh, suffice it to say, though, the, uh, you know, we, if we don't need to lose our agricultural land, then we, uh, shouldn't, and if we don't have a project that's, uh, able to win me over all the way, then I don't think that it should change until, uh, I think the project is, uh, a winning project, but, like I said, I think, I accept that I'm probably the lone wolf on the council, a minority in this opinion, um, but, it's about, it's my take on it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Henkel?
Yeah, I would just like to say, this, uh, the design of this, I really like the density, uh, just the multi-use aspect of it, I think seeing a plan like this tonight and also hearing of a developer that's worked really closely with the neighborhood to mitigate a lot of concerns, um, with the previous project that we've looked at, I just, I feel like we're moving in the right direction with a lot of the ideas that are coming forth to us, and I really want to encourage, um, our commercial developers and, um, just residential home builders, anybody with an idea for land use in Norman to, um, be as creative and compromising as the developers that we've heard from tonight.
I second that. Yes, sir.
So, okay, couple of things, Sean, there, you mentioned yesterday, just real quick, that 36 Avenue, we've been having a lot of issues for years now trying to get that project done. Um, this project would be contributing to recoupment fund, is that right?
Uh, I believe this, I think this was a recoupment district, I believe, for the water line, I believe, right? Is that where this got? Yeah, 136, yeah, so we did not ask for any waiver on the recoupment or anything, so.
So it would contribute to that and potentially enhance 36 Avenue's ranking or scoring so that it can get federal funding to do it. Um, you mentioned that. Um, the only thing I don't recall us, ask, me asking about or coming up was the active well site that's in the middle of the property. What, uh, it's not shown on here that I can see, so I assume it's being...
Yeah, I think it's been abandoned, but, uh, it's certainly something we would have to deal with, with public works if there's something there, but I think I did ask Richard about that, and I think it's been abandoned.
The tanks and stuff are still out there and...
Yeah, so, we'll have to deal with that, obviously, and there's a state statute that says if you do any development, it has to be a hundred and twenty-five feet away from any active well bore, fifty feet away from any equipment, so we have state statutes that regulate how they mandate whether we get approved or not on that, so we will certainly honor all of those. Like, if, if I can, please, uh, Ms. Hudson has asked us to do a floor amendment, we appreciate that very much, and so that, we're requesting, we asked if you would do that as well for the multifamily, but, uh, there are basically, uh, three floor amendments. One of them is in your packet, it was the two-foot setback line, so basically we're asking for a floor amendment, uh, and that's already drafted in your packet, it's under, uh, two-foot build line language as, as it's redlined in there already, and then, so that would be to adopt the red line that's attached in there. Uh, then, what Ms. Hudson's suggested, I, we agree with you on this, is to add multifamily to Section 3B2, and this would be to reflect what we talked about earlier, Councilmember Holman, and also to add multifamily to Exhibit C under allowable uses for development area one. And so that would be the friendly four, floor amendment, if we could have that put into place. So, those three things, two-foot build line as is already written in the packet, and then the multifamily added to Section 3B2, and multifamily added to Exhibit C as allowable use under development area one. And 3A. 3A. That paragraph right there about development area one. Yes, okay. We're working on the fly here, apologize, all right. There we go.
So, Exhibit A and C?
Exhibit... Just Exhibit C. That wasn't the exhibit. The A reference is in the body of the paragraph. So, paragraph 3A is where...
3A and 3B2.
Yep. Yes, 3B2 and 3A for multifamily added as the additional use to reflect what we talked about. Jane, are you okay with that? Well...
Sean, did you say that all of that is outlined in the narrative?
Only one of them, Ms. Hall was outlining the narrative, and that's the two-foot build line. The multifamily issue we talked about with Councilmember Holman has not been redlined in, so the multifamily issue we need to edit in, and we would ask that you do that on the fly, I apologize for this, but, yeah. So, the, the two-foot build line is as written in your plat document right now on the docket.
I'm sorry, can I just add?
Please do, please do, yeah.
So, I just want to make sure you were saying 3B2, but it's actually 3B1.
All right, my apologies.
Okay.
3B1.
So, it's the development area one where you were talking about adding the residential, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's a large commercial area.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we are correct.
My apologies, Councilmember. We don't do this very often on the fly on the floor, but sometimes we do, so.
Is it two-foot build line or two-foot setback? I guess it's the same.
Two-foot setback, same thing, but that's in the, already drafted into the red line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure I got all this.
Council just wanted to highlight the level of support you see from city staff.
Hey, your city staff is, is flat-out awesome. Let me tell you what, your city staff works with us all the time, and you have an outstanding city staff, and, and we deal with them all the time in every way, all of these guys very much, uh, we appreciate them very much, they work hard for you. Do we have that right?
Yeah.
We can put a one-three-part motion is what we're thinking.
Yeah.
I was trying to make the motion. But, we don't do that until we get to the ordinance.
Yeah. So that'll be the next...
Yeah, I'm telling her we have to wait till we get to the ordinance.
Okay, so let's get to the ordinance, and by doing that, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary flat.
Oh, the land use plan amendment, sorry.
Oh, land use plan amendment. We're doing great today. Motion on the floor is to approve the land use plan. Councilmembers. You may cast your votes, you've already done, I would, for some reason, yeah, there goes.
Have been cast, and the motion to approve the land use plan amendment passes unanimously.
By that, yeah. All right. Item thirty-six, well, yeah, I got to read it first. Item thirty-six, an ordinance rezoning property located near the southwest corner of the I-35 in West Indian Hills, section from A2, rural agricultural district to PUD, land unit development district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved up?
Second.
Motion is second, this companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions regarding this item? Make an amendment.
All right, so I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance, to, to amend the PUD narrative to allow two-foot setbacks as redlined in the agenda packet, to amend development area 3A and 3B1, and Exhibit C to include multifamily. Did I get everything?
And a motion is second on the floor to amend the narrative? You're just laughing at me, I didn't know.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to amend the PUD narrative to include two-foot setbacks and add multifamily to sec, area 3A, 3B1, and Exhibit C passes unanimously.
And we've got council questions, are there any further questions from council regarding this item or amendments or anything else? All right, well, uh, this is a time that we can listen, uh, speakers, you got me goofed up now. I don't want...
I'm so sorry, I think we're getting tired. Um, Steven Ellis, would you like to speak on this item? Okay, um, Evan Dunn, okay.
All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended, section by section. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Yay.
Votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the, uh, adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as amended as a whole.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and second, a motion on the floor is to adopt, uh, the ordinance on final reading as amended on a, on the whole. Uh, councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, item number thirty-seven, preliminary plat for North Norman Village, a planned unit development located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Indian Hills Road and Thirty-Sixth Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Second.
Second.
Have motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Are there any further public comments?
Be Stephen Ellis?
Evan said no.
Evan said no. Okay, I think we're good.
Yeah, we're good. All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers. You may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the preliminary plat passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sean, would you come here, please?
So we get it right.
All right. Items thirty-eight and thirty-nine have been withdrawn by staff for additional discussion at the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. So now we will move on to miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
We'll start with Rob Norman, if he's still here. Don't see him. Daniel Munson?
I am Dan Munson from Ward Six. So I'd like to talk about the phasing plan. The very first thing that I noticed about the phasing plan is that the hundred and forty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant space was being costed out at five hundred and sixty-three dollars a square foot. That's ridiculous. That's absolutely ridiculous. You pay five, six hundred dollars a square foot when you live in Manhattan. When you're building on Rodeo Drive, you do not pay five sixty-three a square foot in Norman, Oklahoma. Next thing I want to call out is the original plan that was presented in September by the developer included seven hundred and ninety-five units. The current plan calls out six hundred and seventy-seven units. That's a reduction of a hundred and eighteen units. Why did the anticipated investment of the hotel go from fifty million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to twenty-five million? That's a huge problem. Why is the anticipated investment for a hundred and seventy-seven medium-density housing units being priced out at a hundred and four thousand dollars a unit? My understanding of a medium-density unit's fifteen hundred square feet. You know what that comes out to be, square foot? Sixty-nine dollars a square foot. Are we doing affordable housing out there now? This, it's unbelievable how bad this is. We should take the, that document and run it right through a shredder. There's no way this would have passed. That's my done. Thanks.
Stephen Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I'm not particularly happy about being the skunk at the garden party here, but I do think that it's important that everyone talk and in public about the statutory vacancy of the Ward One seat. I'm concerned by the advice that the city attorney seems to be providing you on this issue. I don't have a direct pipeline. I'm not on the email chain. But from what I understand, he's been suggesting that the appropriate mechanism for declaring a vacancy on council is to go through a process based on Title Twenty-two that involves conce, convening a grand jury. That would do it, no doubt, but it's not the only method, and it's not even the most reasonable method in this particular kind of case. The sensible method involves Title Fifty-one, Section Eight, as I've discussed with you before. That section makes it clear that every office shall become vacant upon entering of a plea of nolo contendere in a state court for any offense that involves a violation of the office holder's official oath. My understanding is that the city attorney is sort of making the different hacks argument here, that the council member in question pled no, no contest to embezzlement, but as a campaign chair and not as a council member. But that is sort of irrelevant because it ignores the second plea, which was to false certificate by a public officer. And the by the public officer matters. That offense clearly involves failure to faithfully discharge a public officer's duty, and so is an offense involving violation of the official oath. So what's the procedure? It's in the relevant section that I talked about, Section Eight of Title Fifty-one. The wording's actually kind of convoluted, but I'll read it slow. Essentially, you guys just need to adopt a resolution that you think the, the council member violated their oath. So here, here's what the wording says. "The fact by reason whereof the vacancy arises shall be determined by the authority authorized to fill such a vacancy." And that's you guys, right? If there's a vacancy, then you're authorized to fill it. So you can find the fact that there was a violation of the oath, and right then, the seat becomes clearly vacant. You have recognized it. So there's actually another procedure that you should know about. It's also based in Title Fifty-one. And it's that the Attorney General is already investigating this case. You probably want to get out ahead of that because the Attorney Gen-
Cynthia Rogers?
Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. Often when I'm teaching my classes, students will say something that's just not right. And I have to think about, did they just say it wrong or do they not understand it? And I think I'm having this struggle with the discussion about the arena phasing plan and the TIF plan and statements like, if they don't build stuff, there will be no increment. Well, I think we need to clarify a couple of things. The improvement district where the arena and entertainment district will be built is smaller than the increment district. So the increment where taxes will be collected from and spent on the arena is bigger. And in fact, it includes properties south of Rock Creek, right near the Y-FAC, which will in, there's just no doubt those are going to develop and those are going to create tax revenues and property tax revenues. So even if nothing happens north of Rock Creek, those properties will be developed, thus creating an increment, whether anything is built north of Rock Creek in the improvement area or not. And the second thing to note is, I think there's some confusion about who's responsible for what and where the money goes to. So the money goes would be borrowed by the county trust. The city collects tax revenues and gives it to the county trust to pay off the debt that they will take. This is the county, not private developers, not the landowners. The conditions for the increment to go into effect is outlined in the Economic Development Agreement, Section Five Point O two, which lays three conditions, approve the phasing plan by NIFTA. So that's a condition. It's not an automatic. A title transfer of property to the county so that they can acquire financing to build on it, because you can't finance for land you don't own. And the third is filing a covenant with the Cleveland County Land Records. There is nothing in those conditions that would create the increment being sent to the county that requires building anything. And there's certainly nothing that requires the landowners to build anything for that increment to be collected. The debt is taken upfront and then payments are made until it's paid off or twenty-five years is reached, no matter what gets built there.
Mayumi Windler?
Mayumi Windler, Ward Two. Okay, so I read something in, from the New Yorker about deaths in jails. And it mentioned Shannon, our cookie queen lady. So something I was thinking about. When you arrest somebody, that person is no longer able to go where or, you know, where they want or do what they want. If you're arresting somebody, you are now responsible for that other person's life. So what if, you know, whoever does the arresting of somebody else, they can't just drop them off at jail and just be done with it? Shouldn't they have to like, be like invested in that person's well-being? And like check in on them every day? Make sure they're okay? Make sure that they're, you know, being looked after? Make sure they're eating and drinking and getting any kind of medical care that they need? This is stuff to think about. I mean, it's not pleasant stuff to think about, but this kind of stuff is happening all over the country because of, you know, these for-profit companies that are, you know, they're out to make money. They're not actually interested in taking care of people. So, I mean, Norman has the police department. The county has the jail. There's a disconnect there where, you know, our police take people to jail and then what happens? Do we even care? I think we, as Norman citizens, we should care about all of those people. That's it.
Evan Dunn? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have so much that I can say, but I probably won't get to it all. That's okay. We'll do this again in two more weeks. Okay, so, thank you, Evan Dunn, fourteen hundred Garfield Avenue, Ward Seven. I want to continue with what we were working on a month ago. Shame on me for not being here, you know, two weeks ago. But, you know, whenever I was younger and I felt embarrassed or I felt ashamed of something, I would do this. Sometimes I was doing it because I was so confident I was scoffing at authority. And sometimes I was being curious. I wanted to connect. I wanted to know people. I wanted to be close and ask questions. And then whenever I was playing basketball, I wanted to shut people down. So I wanted to get wide and just smother somebody. And I never understood, I never trusted the individuals who were around me to do the opposite. Are you always on your phone? Are you always carrying books? Well, you do the opposite. That's how you counteract that embarrassment. That's how you counteract that shame. That's how you counteract, whether it's because of slavery or because of what happened to indigenous peoples. There's a lot for a young, a young white Anglo-Saxon man to feel a burden of. And no one taught me how to use oxygen, how to use these accessible changes. And the terminal illness that I've been living with for thirteen years has only galvanized that intention and that desire to help everyone understand the power of posture, the power of alternating and angularizing your body such that you can activate all of your muscle fibers. Every muscle fiber of myself, my entire musculoskeletal system is absorbing the force of gravity. What's happening when that's occurring? Well, you're delivering as much blood with the least amount of inhibitions to the cells that need it. And that gratitude and that appreciation that has come from that are the lessons. This is why I think that this has occurred. And these orbits, you can move with these orbits. And what's that doing? That's training your central nervous system to work perfectly so that in a violent situation, in an aggressive situation, you can utilize Newton's Third Law and dissipate.
Mark? Adam Walter?
As applicable local MAGA straits, always a pleasure civic engagement. Citizens were encouraged to vote for Norman Forward, promised the swim and gym would serve seniors and other abled. I went to big meetings at our defunct Central Library, asked Kyle Hurley about these programs, was told, we'll get to that later. It's much later and still no posted rates for these demographics. We were also told there would be some, some youth sports competition. Now we are hearing kids are training every week, not competitions every weekend. The money-making is going so well, we're now considering four hundred thousand dollars for more parking. What are the times, rates? Why are they not clearly posted? Seniors and other ableds have conditions where they need to move every day, some in water. This is a quote, "A lot can be done with the barcode key tags and they are well-staffed on Sunday," I was told recently by the city manager. "The senior center is closed on Sunday. Paid members should be able to visit the swim and gym at no additional charge. This would promote goodwill for Norman Forward too and hopefully a senior center on the west side with hours on Sunday." The Swim and Gym website reads, "Hours for the community to enjoy and revel in the pleasure of open swim sessions." Yet under membership prompts, add to cart for price. Are they treating people differently, different people differently? These should be freely posted. Scholarship info should be clear. We were told that prices would be commensurate with the Y, who rarely restrict member access. Please get on this. P.S. Neighborhood Alliance, Crime Free Housing, or someone needs to get on our fifty-plus-year-old apartment complexes with hundreds of units with no or busted playground equipment, hopefully in sight of management offices. My part of town, though not blessed by the city with a fancy name, is bustling with busy- a fancy name, is bustling with business, yet only one smashed bench, part of the Lindsay renovation in the area of Lindsay and Twenty-Fourth, it was smashed in an auto collision years ago, still busted, taxation without representation, we are good enough for rent seekers and good enough to patronize business, where are the benches, where is the quality of life, our Central Library needs fixed, whether the city or Flint Co. is liable, it'll be more affordable to fix now, mold does not take a break, it insidiously colonizes with mycotoxins, get the furniture out, get it treated, put it to use, it would be possible to cordon and seal off the admins and stacks, and have the kids' library area and computers open with a separate AC system, there are guidelines with the EPA for remediating mold in an active building, this is not a big mystery, thanks.